Thank you for attending. Viewers may watch Board of Education meetings and Board Committee meetings live at TCaps.net/Board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't even realize we had the mics. So, yeah, I was gonna say, how is the sound? Can you hear us okay?
Yeah.
Perfect. Still a big echo?
It's not.
Oh, no echo.
Quite a bit better?
Good. And you can hit, we can answer questions, so that's good, so you can hear us.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Good job.
Thank you. We have the review approval portion of the agenda. Is there any changes or approved as presented?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second to Erica. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Public comment number one. The board has set aside this time for public comment. Individuals addressing the board shall have an opportunity to speak and shall be limited to three minutes. Individuals should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system, and we strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures, including a complaint process, are outlined in Board Policy 0167.3. Stacy?
Our speaker is Phil Weiser.
Phil Weiser, your city. I'd like to speak on the sex ed curriculum. You heard about last, the last regular meeting. And I'm going to send you a packet of information, but there's a whole lot in that that we're very concerned about. I and a lot of other people, I believe. And so, alright, I meant to write this all out, but the things. Yep, here we go. Alright. Margie Rich is the one that's in charge of, she's the director of the program that you're putting forth. I forget what it's called, but generations, that's the one, generations ahead. So, a lot of the sex ed curriculum seems to be from that, but she's got a long history of promoting homosexuality to the kids. You may say, well, she doesn't teach it directly, but she promotes those issues. And TCaps actually has been doing it since 2000 that I followed it. But Margie, in 2011, she was the head of the, president of the board when the issue of sexual, I forget exactly what resolution or ordinance, but she helped pass that. In fact, I saw her at a basketball game at TC Central a few years later, and she actually said, yeah, I was the one that passed, helped pass that as a board president. And also Windfire Group, that's, was currently meeting in 2015. I don't know if they're still meeting there, but that's what she mentioned in 2011, that she wants to work more closely with them 2015. They're meeting in the same room that, that's in this generations ahead. And some of the things they say, they said that, I mean, what if you're 15 and you think you might be gay? Just checking out our feelings for the first time and figuring out what's right for them. And in some cases, Windfire is the first time they've met other LGBTQ folks, so that. And then she's, was on the board of Mohash.
Phil, I'd like to remind you that you can't attack people from the podium.
I hope you're taking my time off. I'm not attacking anyone. I'm giving you evidence of her. You know, she was in charge of the board there. They got that big sign at TC Central, and that's where she's located with the 27 different things about promoting homosexuality. And it's just, and if that's on, how come we don't have something like this on the wall? This is the American flag with the Ten Commandments on. This should have equal time if she's promoting homosexual behavior at TCaps. And the sex ed curriculum for K through 2 is terrible. The national standards, did you read those? I'm gonna send you all this packet of information.
Mr. Weiser, thank you. Your time's up.
Yes, I'll send you that packet. Please check it over. And whoever votes for this is voting to promote homosexuality.
The next speaker is Betsy Whacker.
Betsy Whacker, I live at 210 West 12th Street. I am a full supporter of comprehensive sexuality education. The article that was in the Record Eagle mentioned CICUS, the Sexuality Information and Education Council of the U.S. From 1992 to 1998, I was National Public Policy Director for CICUS in New York City. I want to make a pitch for us, maybe moving from this phrase "sex ed" to "sexuality education." I'm afraid the average person hears the phrase "sex ed" and they think of something that people do. But sexuality education is all-inclusive of a person, and it speaks to all the behaviors, choices people make, how they present themselves, how they think of themselves in the world, their decision-making process around healthy choices. And having worked for an organization that started with the word sexuality, it could startle people occasionally. So, I'm just wondering if in our materials, as we move forward, I'm very proud I six years ago moved to a city that takes this seriously and has its part of its curriculum, if we would use that phrase more often, and I think people might be more receptive to it.
That's the last public comment.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next agenda item, consent. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
I move Board of Education, approve the consent calendar as presented. Discussion.
A second.
Alright, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to the only agenda item today, obviously this is a special board meeting, a study session, and so we will be talking today about middle school student achievement. And if I'm to Dr. Van Meijerden.
Okay, so tonight we have Heidi, Kristen, and Misty here, a part of our administrative team of our curriculum inspection group, as well as we have our lead principal, Kristen Stueman, from West Middle School here, and Jeremy Howe, he is an assistant principal at East Middle School. And he has covered, Dan had a vacation that's been planned for quite a while, and so I had the chance to sit down with Heidi and Dan and Jeremy and Kristen to go over all of this a couple of weeks ago, I think, just about. And so you've had the opportunity to be able to see some of that data. And so tonight, they have a presentation for you, and format very similar to the one we had with elementary. A little bit different in, especially towards the later parts, talking about some of our work in professional development, our instructional coaches, some of that that they're gonna take you through. And so with that, I'll go and pass over to Heidi, who will lead us through this.
Hey, I think we already did introductions, but it has been a pleasure working with Kristen and Jeremy to really dig through the instructional rounds and the student supports and the data for middle school. So, we're excited to just give you some background and information tonight. And for tonight's agenda, really, we're gonna look at targets and outcomes. We're gonna look at NWA M-Step and PSAT data as it relates to middle school. We're gonna look at a district snapshot, as well as talk about departmental response, building response, and student support. Then we also want to look at what are our learning targets for tonight? And really, BOE members will become familiar with the middle school NWA M-Step and PSAT data. You'll get a great overview of instructional rounds, which you've heard quite a bit about, but not necessarily what is involved and what we hope to achieve when we're using instructional rounds for increasing student achievement and instruction in the classroom. And we'll end with that middle school targeted student support and what that looks like. We hope to deepen your understanding in the complex and dynamic factors that influence students and rigor and engagement and all those pieces. And then our success criteria at the end is really, will you be able to articulate the middle school next steps in improving teaching and learning and achievement for our middle school students? We really grounded all our work in the areas of the strategic plan. We hear a lot about how school improvement must tie to strategic plan, and we really looked at all our areas and tied those to the areas that made the most sense for us. So, you'll see that engaging and engage and collaborate with community to address resources to the district, leading to student success, you'll see that emphasized in our presentation tonight. Analyzing and improving communication systems to establish a culture of collaboration and transparency. The ties to focus on preventing and addressing bullying and harassment, that has been an issue we've talked about quite a bit. And creating safe and inclusive learning environments. Developing and implementing structures of support to increase mental and emotional and social health and well-being. Continuous improvement of academic achievement. Identifying and implementing strategies regarding student behavior to maximize learning. We all know that that is critical, making sure we're addressing those needs so students can actually get to the academic piece. And then providing additional resources and supports for diverse learners so that all students can be successful. And so, also grounded in those vision, mission, and values that we have around the TCaps compass. And so, in this presentation tonight, you're going to see us emphasize four critical areas. Departmental data review, which will just be an overview of how, what a response is at middle school when you look at data. The second is departmental instructional response. The third is the building level instructional response. And the fourth is targeted student monitoring system. Some of the things we want to highlight in this presentation is that we are now transitioning from elementary to middle school, which is a big transition in itself, right? So, we're going from students. We're going from students who have one teacher, 25 students in a classroom, approximately 25 students in a classroom. We're looking at students moving through a schedule of hours each day. The number of students that staff service goes to content versus all content. And they see about 150 students a day, if you're a teacher at middle school or high school for that matter. And supports, how do we shift supports in that environment, which is very different from elementary, to support all students so they can be successful in their academic and non-academic areas of work? So, questions on that overview, that quick overview before we dig in? Okay, so first part is really digging into that departmental data review response. And to look at that, we think about what happens with our assessment system in middle school. So, in middle school in the fall, in 6th through 8th, in September, you see reading, math, and science assessment for that benchmark reporting. You heard a lot about that from the state reporting that we do in the fall. This is a, this is considered really a local and a state assessment, since we're using that benchmarking. The interesting thing about NWA is that it's also nationally normed. In the winter, we also have another cycle of NWA 6, 8. In January, we see reading, math, and science, and we also have the WEDA assessment for English learners occurring. And then, then in the spring, you'll see quite a few assessments appear, right? We have the third spring assessment for NWA occurring April through May, reading, math, and science again. You see the PSAT and ELA in math. You see the M-Step, April through May, ELA in math, and then 6th and 7th grade, you also see science and social studies, and in 8th grade as well. And you also have the MYACCESS, which is for our special education students that need an alternative assessment. And so, one of the things to note here is, a lot of our conversations really have been around, what does assessment look like? Are we aligning assessment with the needs of our students? And are we using the data to then go back and use those assessments for helping to improve student achievement? So, most of our conversations, since the PSAT has come to light, have been around with the introduction of PSAT. Can we use that in some way as a support instead of NWA for 8th grade? So, you'll probably hear a little bit more about that later on as we get into this. The three types of assessments, again, we have three types that we give in the district. Local, state, and nationally-normed assessments. Local assessments can be anything a teacher does within her classroom. They can be formative assessments. It can be NWA, because we use that local data for ourselves. Then we move to state assessments, which are the assessments that are required by the state. Those include the PSAT, the M-Step, MYACCESS, WEDA for those state assessments. And then we also have nationally-normed assessments, which can fall in two places. So, for example, PSAT, that's a nationally-normed assessment, but it's also the one the state has selected to use as their state assessment. That actually helps us, because we get to kind of double-dip and see, what does that look like nationwide? As well as what do we also see statewide, and how are we doing on PSAT within the state?
We'll give one moment with that. We get funding from the state for NWA as a benchmark assessment. There's a couple we could choose. I Ready is another.
You're right.
NWA is what we've done. So, when we kind of talk about being both state and local, we do get funding to do those three assessments from the state.
And that just means to administer the test, right?
Correct. It pays for the test.
Yep, because you have to have, they require some type of benchmarking. And so, NWA was one of the selection choices they put out there a few years back. And we have longitudinal data on NWA, because we have been using it since before my time in TCAP. So, I think 2010, maybe?
That sounds, we'll go with that.
We'll go with that.
Approximately.
I gave it 2015, so it was well before that that they started using NWA. And, and that was specifically for the information that it gave, and we'll talk about it later on, about what teachers can glean from that NWA information in their classroom. So, yes.
What's WEDA stand for?
Um, WEDA lady, come on. Oh, we both know, but it's not gonna be on the tip of our tongues. Please hold. Yes. Please hold for that information.
I can't believe I can't think of it. It's world. Uh, the WEDA stands for, well, they don't tell us what it stands for.
World Class Instructional Design and Assessment.
That is exactly what it stands for.
You get the award tonight.
World Class Individual.
She didn't put it in a question, no.
World Class Instructional Design and Assessment.
Which is done for English.
Language learners.
Yeah. Who thinks of this?
Somebody else, just like, yes.
You would not guess that from that title.
Alright.
Thank you.
Excellent. So, moving on to departmental instructional response, this is really the second area that we would like to highlight, because there's a lot that goes into instructional responses for departments at middle school. The three areas, again, you'll see listed here that tie back to that strategic plan that we know come into play when we're looking at departmental instructional response. I brought this data overview here because I thought it was very important. You will see, you'll hear a little bit more in the next two slides about how they actually analyze the data here. But what you see on this slide, just to orient you to the data, is that in the fall, the teachers request that they would like to see the M-Step data, the NWA data, because we know, we know M-Step, right? They take it in the spring, and it's really an autopsy about how they can look at to redo and help support that next year. They ask for NWA, they also ask for PSAT, I think I have that part clipped off. And what you also see on here are semester one grades, okay? And so, the idea about looking at this data in one place, and this is an individual student data report. So, each one of those lines is one student and how they did in a particular class. So, it could be Algebra I, Algebra II, by teacher. And what they use this for is they look at not only M-Step data. If I'm a math teacher, right, I might look at how a student is performing in math, but have a realization that that student struggles in reading, and then think about how I can make accommodations for that to help support in that classroom. So, when we think about a teacher digging down into data, it's not only about ELA, if you're an ELA teacher, it's also about, you know, the math and the other pieces that you see here. So, the third piece of that is looking at semester grades, right? We also want to think about how are our students performing in the class? What are they earning for grades? Does, is that really in alignment with how they're actually? Does, is that really in alignment with how they're actually performing also on those standardized assessments and tests, right? So we, our hope would be that when we have our standards aligned to what we're teaching in class, our grades would also reflect what we see also in the performance on their standardized test. Now, not all times, because we know kids sometimes have test anxiety and things like that. But for the most part, it's a good reflection on how our students are doing, looking at those grades, looking at how they're performing on NWA, M-Step, PSAT.
So you know which student is which line?
Yes. So the teachers get a report by teacher, says the, the course that they're in, the student name and number. Their, how they have performed in their different areas. It helps them analyze next steps for, for the student. In NWA, there's also strand analysis where you can look at and dig down specifically into the area where a student might be struggling and need additional support. Those strand data areas look at strengths and weaknesses of students.
Question, that semester grade, does that, is that one grade for both math and ELA?
No, this is by teacher. So if you think about a teacher has this report for their student. So I could be an Algebra I teacher, and this is my fourth hour class. And I can see kids that might, I know I have to provide additional support for reading instruction or lower the level of the reading on some things to help support their math instruction. So it would be a teacher's, specific teacher's report on students to help them understand how to better support in class and make adjustments on delivery of instruction.
So a teacher would get a different one for every hour, you know, and every teacher's a different subject, they would get what that is by subject.
So they get the yellow or the blue, not both?
So, so each teacher would get these for their hour, able to look at strengths and weaknesses and then move on from there. I didn't put all that stuff in there simply because, you know, we didn't want all that data out there. This is just a snapshot of what they see.
So in the, and they would get this data four times a year then, starting the school year with the M-Step and then-
They get it at the beginning of the year.
Yep.
So in the fall, so we do the NWA in the fall, September. And in their PLCs, and I believe it was October, is when they did this analysis within their departments to look at it.
And then again in the spring, did you say?
We did not do it again in the spring because now again, we're in that cycle of looking at, waiting for the autopsy of our M-Step data or PSAT data. So they'll get it again in the fall, they'll take a look at where their students are at. That also helps them look at their composition of the class. Like, how can I group students to help them be successful and differentiate on instruction?
With those two tests, there's nothing new to review again?
Once a year.
That's the beauty of NWA, three times, is you get that.
Now, NWA, they get every, they get three times a year. So they see that data three times a year.
It's the only assessment we get that, though.
I did, I know this isn't part of your overview here, but I did notice that there were a few dips in the winter. Maybe you're going to get into that later. And I just was curious, because you can see a couple of these lines, the students started, they ended higher compared to the fall, but they dipped in the middle of the year and I thought that was interesting.
Typical. So I don't actually get in that tonight, but that is typical, that's not unusual. We do, although in the past two years, we have not seen that as significant as we have in the past. So we do usually see a dip in the winter and then higher performance in the spring. And a lot of times the teachers equate to that because they look at how students are doing to content that they've gotten to in class, right? Because NWA, like everything else, they're looking at when curriculum is delivered and assessing on those pieces. So if a teacher has not gotten to that content in your mid-year, and that's one of their testing points, then you're not going to see those results until the spring. So we-
It's not the exact same assessment, it builds each one.
And it builds for students. So like depending on the student, it will push them to see where they're actually at. The, the other thing, that's why you'll see when we do report outs even in the fall, and when we report out, you'll see that fall to spring data. That's, that's really what we look at. And in this, in this in particular, you'll see kind of the trends overall. So the reason I bring this up is because when you think about a teacher's hat, about how they look at and review data in their classroom, there's, there's a lot to it. It's not just one snapshot, it's how do we pull, we talk about triangulating those data points. This is how we are able to do that. And then give them opportunities to meet in teams with their departments and content leaders to understand and dig through what their next steps might be. So here's an example, this came from Jane Porath. She's a math teacher at East Middle School, excellent teacher, most of you probably know of her. But from that analysis, she gave a sample, here, here is my specific example that we did. So for her data analysis, she took that NWA math data from the previous academic year and analyzed it to provide those key findings that you see here. So they saw increased proficiency levels, there was notable increase in the levels students reaching proficiency benchmarks compared to the previous year. So again, that analysis looks at from one year to the next, not just current state. And then targeted growth, students who were previously performing below grade level demonstrated significant growth in closing the achievement gaps. And in two more slides, I think I'll get to kind of what the snapshot that teacher looks like and is able to see. And then from that, they look at action steps also for areas or gaps that they have. And for this one in particular, this year, they looked at data-driven curricular actions and rich mathematical tasks, right? So remember, we've not adopted relatively a short time ago that new curriculum for CPM. And then we recently made a modification based on some of the data that we saw for our students that were not in any of those accelerated courses. So this one kind of speaks to that. The new curriculum provided a variety of challenging tasks that require students to think critically and work together. This approach is expected to encourage deeper understanding. As they went throughout the year, they looked at how that was impacted since they adopted CPM and looked at where they had gaps. Visible thinking, the use of whiteboards, you will see an increase in the use of whiteboards for students to be able to collaborate and discuss. And then, and then that last step there where you see the classroom, the mindset throughout lessons to build student confidence and resilience in math was part of their action plan. And then they also have goals, right? What is their impact? What do they hope to see? Improved scores, enhanced engagement, and positive feedback from both students and parents on the new CPM curriculum. Moving on, I'm going to take you back. So when we talked about NWA. Let me see, do I have a pointer on this? I think I do. Yeah, sort of, maybe not. A little bit. So this is an overview of a quadrant report that a teacher would be able to see about her. And this is just a sample from NWA, nobody's data in particular. But it, it allows us to look at where your students are trending. So in the bottom left-hand quadrant, that's low achievement, right? Low achievement, low growth area. Upper right is high achievement, high growth. Our goal is to get everybody in that green square in the upper right-hand side. And then we, and then we think about each student individually. Like this is a fall, this could be a fall snapshot, and then we look at our spring. Were we able to actually move students up into that quadrant in the upper right? One of the things to note, like sometimes you see our special education students that start very, they have low achievement sometimes in cases if they're, if they're a math area of concern. And in the end, you might not see high achievement, but you could see high growth in that upper left-hand area, which is also good, right? So the students are, you're seeing a growth rate even though they're not high achieving yet. You see a growth rate that puts them in that upper left quadrant that shows high growth. So those are the things that the teachers are able to look at each time they receive their NWA reports. Have my students grown since the last time? Where are we headed and what does that look like? So another tool that teachers are able to look at and use to look at maybe where their students' growth could be. So I, I would listen to, I was not able to attend the elementary, but I did listen to some of the questions that came about. And this slide really is, looks at NWA data or EMS, kind of that overview over time. And the question came about like, can we look at longitudinal data even further back? And so what I did is on the upper left-hand side, you'll see where it says S15, 62.8. That is actually in 2015, so all the way back to 2015. So that's almost 10 years of data I was able to collect, because I think I started collecting my first year. So, and you, we probably could dig and go back further. But that gives you 10 years to show you, in 2015, we're at that 62.8 in that ELA section. And then you see that decline and when we start to come up and level off from COVID. So in, again, in the green section for EMS, you'll see the math. In 2015, we were at 45.6. And 2024, that spring, we were at 55.46. So seeing strong growth at middle school in that math area on our NWA overviews overall for EMS for East Middle School.
So a question about, what was going on in 2018 and 2019 here? Because that was all pre-COVID. And are we still using the same curriculum materials?
We are, it depends on what you're talking about. So math, we are not, ELA, we are.
Okay, so what, what's the-
Didn't the cut scores change for NWA as well?
The cut scores changed periodically, yes. So within that time period, you've probably had two different cut score changes as well.
So meaning what, what's defined as proficiency changed?
What's defined as proficiency, where students are considered proficient. And again, remember, we always use 60 percentile for us when we're looking at NWA because it aligns more closely to our M-Step data. So math, we adapted CPM. ELA, they're still using My Perspectives, correct? We haven't changed anything in ELA. So we did see some, and, and when a curriculum is adapted, you usually see a good return on investment for at least two years. And then typically, it sometimes levels out and then the growth is slower.
Does anybody remember when we started, we adopted the My Perspectives?
Yeah, I don't know on that. Do you know on ELA?
Yep. So we just renewed last year, which was 2023.
Nine years ago.
Yes, I, so I think it's been six years prior to that. Do you think it was nine?
Well, I remember we made a shift with our ELA curriculum when I first went to West Middle School, that there was a real shift with that. But it might have been something else as well.
Yeah, that was, that was a, a different program. So I think it's been six years prior to that.
And I, and you all always have a process for evaluating multiple alternatives, right? So that was the winner, if you will, among the, the teaching staff. Are there any other thoughts about, you know, what, what might have caused such a steep decline in those years leading up to 2022?
COVID anticipation.
I wonder, when was, when was Journeys adopted?
Journeys was adopted in 18.
And so you wonder, did the elementary base, are those kids walking in?
Journeys was adopted in 18 because I thought that came the year I was here, my first year in 2015. I, I'm thinking that Journeys was adopted earlier than that.
I think it, I think it's older too.
But that would have been at the elementary level.
16, yeah.
Just a thought.
The other dynamic I think is when, particularly the middle school, and I'm sure that, that Kristin and Jeremy can speak to this. There, there are different tests that I think kids kind of rise to the occasion for. And it, it is oftentimes when kids are getting assessed, if they hit M-Step before they hit NWEA. If they, if they're fatigued when they're looking at M-Step, NWEA, and PSAT. I think it's why we have conversations about really wanting to make sure that we're putting the right assessments in front of kids at the right time. Because there really is, I think it's challenging to have a kid, you know, every test is, this is super important, we need you to, to do your very best. And then next week, we go, hey, this is really important, we need, there's some-
So you would not have taken the PSAT eight at that time, for instance, like you do now. And this is a conversation we've had about, do you not do? Because honestly, for the kids, they take the PSAT pretty serious. And at that point, they don't really care about NWA, the third test. I've had kids, you know, in our group, even tell us that. So, you know, that, that's one piece.
And that's, that's been a conversation for, you know, the last few years. And probably will be continuing to be a conversation.
Our problem is, is that in the past, our state evaluation system has been based off of those growth measures. And so to not to have the three to benchmark off of, you know, is something that we felt was a struggle. Now with it changing again in that element, I do think this is a conversation that we do want to bring up to the curriculum committee and have a, a broad discussion and a decision on whether, what's the right one to keep going with.
So will the state accept the PSAT in lieu of NWA?
They will not. They do not yet.
But we only have to do it twice though, right, for the state?
We only, we only have to do it twice.
Yeah.
So it could be fall, winter for NWE and then-
Fall, winter.
Yeah.
Eighth grade, yeah.
Yep, eighth grade. And then West Middle, the same thing. I included the 2015, way back in 2015, just so you could kind of see like what it was 10 years ago and where we are now. And I have all the numbers in between. So if you end up wanting those, just tell me, it's just that it, it shrunk the graph so small when you added all those in there that it was a little bit easier to see if we put like kind of that starting point from 2015. And so again, this is kind of in two areas. It's a state-required benchmarking assessment. We really use it locally for the teachers to dig down into information, and then it's nationally normed. So we, we get quite a bang for our buck on that one.
Can you tell where you have the dip down in 19? Can you tell if that cohort begins to pull things up or do you just kind of let them move on as the breath changes?
This isn't cohort data, it's overall, but we do have cohort data. We do have by-grade cohort data. So we watch those trends for students by cohort. Typically, we don't get into the weeds on that stuff as much in the meetings that we have here, but we, yes, we do look at cohort data as well.
I'm thinking cohort though, sort of like all the kids at that age that were tested, you know, in 19.
You'd like to see where they go from a high school standpoint?
I'd like to see if they, they begin to, if they were just slow learners, but they're still on a good trajectory.
There, there is some additional information for you because later on, I have some, like I have, if you notice, there's some slides that aren't viewable. Because I didn't, I thought it was too much in the weeds, too much information. But it actually gives a snapshot of the state, not only how students perform proficiency, but what then their growth appears to be as if they are going to be proficient when they get to PSAT and SAT. So that might be something for you to go back and look at when we get further, further into this.
That's what you're not going to see, obviously, NWA ends here, right? And so you're not going to see SAT, which could correlate different, but you could see a trend, you know, from that standpoint.
That would probably be helpful. I'd like to mention that because earlier, when I looked at this, I could find that slide. But as I'm looking at it right now, I can't. So.
Yeah, we're pretty-
And I have slide 17.
Yes, so these, all your growth data reports are still in there. But it was too, like we had, there would have been 17 more slides and we couldn't get to the good stuff over here, right? So it's still in there. If you, if you can't view it, let me know and I'll just, I'll just change the settings. It must have to do with settings maybe for viewing and then you can view that again.
Okay, thanks. Oh, I, I just want to ask a question. What are, since the shape of the math, you know, trend line is very different for West versus East. You know, there just was a, basically a one-off year at West where the math dipped down, otherwise it was pretty steady. What's the thought between the differences between West and East?
Um, I don't know that I have an analysis or thought on what it could be. It could be on even teachers, like how long have they been teaching in the area, were they a new teacher? We haven't dug into that piece yet. Typically, it just has to do with a cohort of kids. And maybe Kristin, you can speak to that, you see that all the time when they come in. A particular cohort or group of kids is either high-performing, low-performing, or steady as it goes, so. I don't know that I have an answer for that, but we can dig into it more if you need us to.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I mean, for your, for, you know, just the, it's, it's dated now, you know, it's, it's 2019. But, you know, when you see things like that, it just, you know, probably raises thoughts like, what's going on, you know? Since we want crosstown alignment.
The flu in that class during that time.
Yeah, it's interesting too, because if you look at that trend in the, in the 21, 22, 23 for West Middle, that just consistent, hardly any change at all. And then we saw some this year for NWA. But remember in math, you heard us talk about the modifications to that math was more aligned to content and grade-specific content. So we did see an uptick in our math scores because the theory is that it's more aligned to our- And grade-specific content. So we did see an uptick in our math scores because the theory is that it's more aligned to our content curriculum that we're teaching by, um in math. And then um we get to M-step and PSAT data. And what I did on this one is I pulled this directly from that MySchool data site, so you could again see those trends. Because it seemed like that was the information you were interested in looking at last time. And so this gives trends overall for um sixth, seventh, eighth grade. This is ELA for EMS and shows proficiency. So um, you know, thinking about not super-high growth, but um some growth rebounding in seventh. And um seventh and, sixth and seventh grade. And then we have our math, M-step, and SAT again, shown on this graph as well as percent proficiency. So if you're looking, I mean, we just are pretty steady as it goes in most cases on our M-step and PSAT data. And then West Middle School, ELA. And math as well. So you'll see that sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Um that arrow is pointing to when they used to use MEEP instead of M-step, when those scores happened. Now they've kind of phased out. At this point, we've had M-step for so long. And now, is there conversation still about any changes with M-step moving to a nationally normed? And then Montessori. In Montessori, you'll see um a little bit of fragmented pieces on that because they didn't start their middle school program. Um they only started the middle school program a few years ago. And you see some, some ups and some downs in those areas for math, especially for Montessori. Uh but definitely um the last year uh trend upward for our math, um scores for Montessori.
Are the numbers small enough in some of these testing groups that one kid can make a difference in throwing your scores?
In Montessori, probably, but not in East Middle.
Yeah, Montessori.
Not in.
Your N size is small.
Yeah.
And then PSAT. So we were really excited when PSAT became a part of that state testing piece. Because we really felt it prepared students for when they got to the high school. And it was really a primer for them to, um, you know, learning how to test is still a big deal. And so having that at the middle school, um and there was a different sense, and maybe you guys can speak to this better. There was a different sense of how important it was when they had the attachment to PSAT.
A hundred percent. I think how, how important it is not only for students, but for families. The College Board has a really nice family supports for predicting college readiness for our eighth graders right out of the, the gate. And our families have found that to be pretty accurate, um and informative data as well. So there's a, a high level of importance and I think value um in the PSAT test in particular, too. Plus, it's novel. You know, it's not the twenty-fourth time that the kid has taken NWEA as an eighth grader. Um so there's a lot of those kind of um outside factors that I think impact performance. Which is good, because it's nice to get, to be able to eliminate some of those things, such as, you know, the value that a student uh places on a test. When it might negatively impact, um you know, taking that NWEA again as an eighth grader.
And then, um so when we're looking at the PSAT, um I put these together so you could see, I think that was another question um people had the last time. Was like, how do we, we want to look at, what is the state on average, and then how are we performing? So this is both ELA and math. So that means students were proficient in both ELA and math and the percentage that they were profi- efficient, or proficient. So you'll see yellow is EMS, green is West Middle School, and that turquoise color is Montessori, and then gray is the state. We always consistently outperform the state by a significant amount. So always very happy about that, but also look to cohorts around us with same demographics, so look at how we can continue to get better. Um always room for growth. You'll hear this later on, too, when we start talking about like, what are our next steps? Where are we headed? How is instructional rounds going to help with that? Um and then they're, they're broken down also by specific to ELA and specific to math, for you to see. Um again, gray is the state average, and you'll see EMS is yellow, and um West is um green. Montessori, that turquoise color.
And, and these are the percentages that met proficiency, right?
Yep, yep. Proficient or highly proficient.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I'm really curious about Montessori's performance, because you know, Montessori, we're a public Montessori. So we have to have the standardized testing, but the rap on Montessori is they don't test if it's a private Montessori, right? So I find it really interesting that our Montessori is, you know, outperforming our traditional schools. Is it because they're doing any kind of test preparation, or what's the thought?
I, I would say you have a completely different school demographic at Montessori. So free and reduced lunch rate is much lower at Montessori. Um so I think that is a factor in it. Um I do think that um they have a smaller, this is again, that smaller class size. So they have, what, one group? Is that, how many students do you know, John?
Twenty-five.
I should, that's what I was thinking. There isn't, there's only twenty-five students in those Montessori um cohort classes. So that makes a difference, right? So you're also with those same cohort of kids, whereas at East and West Middle, moving all around.
With an aid?
Yep.
But no transportation?
Yep.
That was an agreement a long ago.
So no transportation means the parents really have to be very supportive.
And so that speaks to the demographics, too, that a lot of times are attending.
Does the Montessori concept of working at your own pace play into this at all, along with the smaller?
Just hard to say. You know, it's so anecdotal to give, you know, um any kind of quantitative measure to that. It's really tough. Really tough.
Yeah.
You know?
It's int- it's int- and it would be an interesting study.
It, it is, and I think, well, part of my, um, one of my fellowships was in Finland, and they talked about that specifically. Students actually don't even enter kindergarten until six or seven years old, because they talk about the readiness there. And so it could have something to do with it. It could be, um, and a lot of their schools are, really, when I um visited the schools, were around that Montessori philosophy. They were designed in that way. So it could, it could have some bearing on it, but those are really hard, like John was saying, to pinpoint whether or not that was a factor in the performance that we see with the students. I would suspect that um the makeup of the school demographics that are attending that school probably are more likely to be the indicator of why we see such high scores.
I think it seems to me like if you compared it to local independent schools, you would see something similar. Because there is motivated, there are motivated parents, thus the supportive, smaller environments as well. No matter, I mean, just across the board.
Yep.
And if you go back, it's real interesting, the leveler is, I think, when you basically lock down. You lock down the state, and you can see kind of things even out across the board.
And we have like a, the, the scores for twenty-four are out, they're embargoed, so we can't share them yet. But um uh they looked, we were very positive about what we're seeing for this year's scores. So excited um to be able to share those with you in the fall again, too.
Are you seeing the same kind of trend, differences between the three schools?
Um no, I would say similar, similar trajectories and trends.
That's as far as we can go.
Yep.
From state bar.
Did I say too much?
She's walking the line right now.
So um, yeah, I have to work a few more years, right?
Yeah.
The um PSAT math, again, this is like which students met proficiency again. You'll see, again, outperforming the state, um and actually have increased in how they're outperforming the state in some cases here. So um again, this is a state national norm test. It's the state test, but it's nationally normed, so we love that they're using PSAT. It gives us much deeper information on um next steps. Now, um they used to have item analysis on our SAT and PSATs, but now that they're digital, there isn't as deep item analysis on those. So we're, we're, everybody keeps clamoring to get those back when the students do the digital um test.
Question, Heidi, on um, so comparing to the states, one thing, right? But what about those schools that are most similar to us, like Forest Hills, that has a bit similar demographic? Do you dig into the numbers?
Yes, we do.
And then compare?
I wonder, Stacy, if you could, I have those in there, too, because I was trying to anticipate all the things you may ask for. So on um slide thirty-three, I'm trying to. So slide thirty-three, I don't know if you can open, um thirty-three and thirty-four would be a good sample, and then you guys can dig in after.
Okay.
If you open those up and refresh it.
Slides thirty-three and thirty-four?
So, oh, I guess I, maybe I could do it if you just refresh. I can unskip the slides.
Oh, I need to unrefresh that, it's interesting.
Maybe, okay, I unskip it, but if you refresh it and go to slide thirty-three, then I can show them what I was thinking they might want to see. But it's, like I said, there's way better stuff coming than what I'm talking about, I think, later, so I don't want to spend a ton of time on it. So this is, this is what I anticipated you would ask. So um we are the green. The pink are our like schools, similar demographics, and the orange is the state. So on the left-hand side, you see students' performance on state tests. And then on the right-hand side, I almost think this is more important on the right-hand side. The right-hand side shows a student progress on state tests, meaning are they on track to be proficient by the time they graduate? So this shows, um not only are they proficient, right, on the left side, but then how are they, how are we progressing? So that when they do graduate, they actually um are proficient and are on the track for that. So again, we typically outperform um state and our peers. Some cases, we're neck and neck, but that actually is good for us. Um uh I can get you a list. The only thing I didn't include was the list of the schools that were comparables, but they.
You've seen them a lot.
Yeah, there's like five or six of them, yeah.
Farmington, West Ottawa, all that list.
Yeah.
Based on student population and free, reduced lunch, right?
Yes, yep. And there's lots, lots of different ways we can look at it. Um but we even go through and sift through particular ones that we know are best.
Portage, Portage is often a close, two high schools, Midland, yeah.
Midland is one that um is a high performer that we always look at. We, we've actually called there in curriculum adoptions and said, what are you using? You know, give us some more information, tell us um a little bit more about how you're using it, what, what is similar, what is different. So um this, I thought you would ask for, these are how we compare to our peer districts. And um we can, like I said, we can open those up, but it would be, I think I have another ten or fifteen slides on that, so I won't make you listen to that, but you can.
Do you want me to go back to where you were, or are you?
I think, yes. Now we're back at questions. Forty-six. So um again, tried to include some historical data that went back more than just a few years prior to COVID, so you could see that. Looked at what are, um how we perform with our peer districts, as well as really, probably where the rubber meets the road is just how those teachers are able to look at and triangulate that data to make decisions about what's happening in the classroom to have impact on that student learning. And so I see you're all still awake, so that's a good thing. I see Scott may have be done. He's done today, right? He's done.
I'm sure what happened there.
So um now, um we're moving on to that second piece. And I'm going to turn it over to Kristen, who is going to wow you with a lot of incredible information about building-level instructional response for middle school students.
Thank you.
And notice that you cut the band slide out.
The band?
Oh, no, she caught up.
I have it on my.
I told her to put the band slide in.
Needs to be in there.
Oh, you're dead to me.
I'm kidding. So um I'm going to take it from here with uh basically how we respond at the building level to the data that Heidi just walked us through. Our conversation is going to focus on our MTSS, our multi-tiered systems of support, um around instruction. And then our professional development cycles as well. Um Heidi kind of alluded to the fact that we're going to spend some time talking about instructional rounds, which is near and dear to me. Um it's something that I'm very, very excited and proud uh to have come back to TCAPs. I experienced it as a classroom biology teacher at West Senior High myself. Um so I understand firsthand the power of that rounds process with providing us with um collegial, uh objective observational data that's also actionable. So our data conversation will continue to a certain degree um around that, around that rounds process. Um again, I want to ground our work um in the uh TCAPs compass focus. And just reiterate that the work of the district really is the work of the building. Um East and West Middle School have worked incredibly hard to align our instructional practices. I know that's something that Josie just alluded to moments ago, um our non-academic supports. You know, basically, we want to make sure that whether a student lives on High Lake Road or Silver Lake Road, they have access to the same high level of instruction. And the same academic and non-academic supports as well. We really believe in a, a shared and equitable experience for our students on both sides of town. So we're going to focus for just a moment on a slide that probably looks familiar to you to a certain degree. My elementary colleagues did a wonderful job of explaining this, but I did want to touch on, um again, what this looks like and feels like at the middle school level. With regard to tier-one instruction, that is our universal instruction that all kids get. So it's critically important that our tier-one instruction is guaranteed and viable. That our scope and sequence that we have planned is actually being delivered at the classroom level. At East and West Middle School, we've really narrowed our focus around two research-based instructional practices. I believe that you've heard about explicit instruction, um which focuses on foundational understanding. So it's critically important that kids understand the basics before they can apply uh information at a rigorous level. At the middle school level, we've also leaned into um pre-A, pre-A principles. Um it's the same college board that you've heard about with AP at the high school level. These shared principles of academic conversation, higher-order questioning, evidence-based writing, close observation and analysis have been found by the College Board to set students up for success, not just in AP classes at the high school level, but for success in, at the college level as well. So at the middle school level, like I said, we've, we've begun adopting these so that we uh keep doors open to rigorous learning experiences for all kids. So again, every student is going to have access to high levels of academic conversation. That's the, the first principle that we're focusing on. We're kind of taking it in a stepwise manner at, at the middle school level. Um but really making sure that our kids practice that, that they are active members of the classroom environment. So that they're able to um take the learning and apply it at higher levels. Both the explicit instruction and the AP shared principles are creating a, a unified and focused professional development vision for the middle schools. So that our teachers know what we're working on. Um there are through lines for multiple um meetings for multiple years with that focus as well. And they also get wrapped into our instructional rounds, problem of practice. You can think of a problem of practice kind of as the focus, what we're working on for that round session. When we talk about tier-two interventions for students, so we, we would imagine that about eighty percent of, of students, that tier-one instruction is really going to work well for them. For some kids, they need more. Um and that more can come in the, the form of tier-two uh supports, or tier-three, our most intensive level of support. For two tier, uh tier-two, excuse me, um interventions at the middle school level, it is tricky. Um you know, when students move class by class, um many of these students um have found the area that they need support in to be something that they don't want to do. So when those support classes take the place of an electives class, um that's a tough sell for kids. Um so as it stands, we have math um support classes in place at both middle schools. Uh and we're actively um exploring some reading supports as well, but we want to make sure we get those right. We also have our Learning Center and Learning at Lunch to provide additional academic support for students with a staff member who works one-on-one to provide kids with um extended time, extra time to just complete an assignment if they're absent for a prolonged period of time. Um we do pull uh failing grade reports. Our counselors work individually with students to um problem-solve around why they're failing. And then often, we'll work with the student and their family to get them some extra support at that Learning at Lunch as well. Um I don't want to steal all of Jeremy's thunder here. He's going to talk in, uh he's probably thinking, oh, no, she's taking everything. Uh at, to a high uh level of detail about our student support team as well, um and the behavioral interventions that are in place. So I'm just going to let him get to that. Uh when we talk about tier-three interventions, um that's for a student who has a five-O-four plan or an IEP. Uh a five-O-four plan basically provides kids with accommodations uh that can be made to help them access learning. And an IEP, uh that's accommodations plus specially-designed instruction, so our most intensive level of support. Students who receive um support um in our co-talk classes, which are classes that have two teachers, one general education teacher and a special education teacher. That would be targeted toward their IEP needs. Um or our departmental. Um, or our departmental classes, which would be, uh, taught by a, a special education teacher. And we have those classes in the area of ELA and math. Um, those are the two, uh, areas that we support. Okay? Um, I'm gonna transition us into our professional development. And one of the adjustments that we've really made, and we're always checking and adjusting the work that we're doing based on data, like what Heidi shared with you. Um, but one of the real adjustments that we've, um, made is leaning into this idea of collector-teacher, collective teacher efficacy. A great deal of educational research has shown that, uh, effective teacher teams can really powerfully accelerate student growth, um, more than a number of other factors. So we've worked to organize our professional development, um, structures in very collaborative and collegial ways. Um, we've made sure, again, to really, uh, have a targeted focus so that our staff members know exactly what it is they're working on, what they're focusing on. Um, and then looking at the outcomes of their work, you know, was my intended outcome of a lesson, was that achieved in the student learning outcomes? Um, you'll see that our, uh, our PLCs, our professional learning communities, um, that those have really, uh, gotten dialed in around, um, tuning lessons and then examining student learning outcomes from those lessons as well. Um, both schools have worked, um, for, uh, a, a number of, um, months now to develop our, um, problem of practice for the, um, instructional rounds too. So you'll see that coming up here shortly. Um, our teachers were instrumental in developing those. Um, so again, that idea of, uh, collaboration and of input is carried through, um, in the work that they're doing as well.
I asked had a question.
Yeah, of course.
What does effect size mean? Like on the left, this is effect size of one-point-three-four.
I love it. Okay, so effect size is basically the impact that, um, different situations have on a student's learning outcomes. So some things can have a negative effect size. So if you can imagine a, a student who's chronically absent, that's gonna have a negative effect on their learning outcomes. Um, some things are just, uh, maturation, like you would expect any kid who, who grows and matures from third to fourth grade to experience a certain level of academic growth. Other things we know, um, are attributed solely to teachers and teacher moves in the classroom. Um, and then there are some things, like in the blue, that's kind of the sweet spot. That's really where, you know, when we get into, um, looking at the impact that instruction, um, instructional, um, structures have on students, that's where we see really, um, growth that's beyond just what you would expect by maturation or just being part of an educational setting. Anything else that?
Well, I'm just curious. So do you, do you all feel like you're hitting this, or is there, you're gonna, you know, more professional development?
Well, that, that's part of-
And, or, or so forth that would help you get there?
That's part of leaning into that collector-tea, collective teacher efficacy, 'cause that's on the high end. Um, and so we're really trying to hone and, um, make our, our PD intentional. Um, and, you know, I think the incorporation of those instructional rounds is gonna help with that. I think our, um, kind of revamped PLC focus is gonna help with that. Um, so I, to answer your question, we're getting there. I think that we're not there yet, but that we are, uh, creating the structures and conditions to, to get there.
Not, not to get too far ahead, but, so when we do instructional rounds, we're going in the classroom looking for teachers exhibiting exactly those skills in their instruction when it's being looked at by part of that round. And so you might remember, I've talked about John Hattie and effect size number. You know, we look at class size, look at different things, and so that's that higher end of the things that you do that have the most impact based on Hattie's work of meta-analysis over decades of-
Yes.
-research on the most effective things.
Is he the one who said class size doesn't, is not as big of a factor as?
It's not as big as some of those things that you see right there that are there, um, you know, are the highest ones. Not that that doesn't have an effect size, it's just the things that you see there have a higher effect size, you know, on improvement from that research.
Can I just, uh, make a comment? And I don't know if it's a comment or a question, but as we've had transition from our, um, curriculum, um, you know, uh, administrative level, because of these systems in place, it doesn't change based on who is really leading, right? I mean, that was, that's a lot of the purpose is to put these systems in place.
So to give you an example, I think, you know, and Kristen can, you know, talk, we've talked from the beginning, uh, uh, um, when we talk about, um, the, the work of Anita Archer, you know, and explicit instruction, that is one of those high-effect strategy, valued strategies that was actually a blair early before I got here. We have now expanded that across the district, and that's been a constant of a thing we're working on. So there are some of these we have picked out to be district-wide specific things to work on. And I think, as we're saying, we're getting there, we're starting to look at expanding, and then a part of that instructional rounds that went away. You know, and as we talked to teachers, that they felt really bad, that like this was a great thing, to bring that back and now to start identifying and evaluate those things, that's where we're trying to get back to. And so the answer you're saying is, yes, it's just now capacity and leadership and those things of, okay, if you're not exhibiting that, or not exhibiting as well as you would like, how do we help teachers to improve at that? And that's the work that we're talking right now.
Mm-hmm. And focusing on a few.
Correct. Not the whole spectrum.
Not that whole spectrum, but where are you gonna get the most return on your investment?
I have a question. The point four is applied to what? Where does that make a difference? I mean, are you applying it to point four grades, testing outcome?
No, based on-
Or does that mean?
Based on instructional, uh, growth from instruction.
The impact that it has on students is point four. Anything above point four is actually considered accelerated learning.
And, and what is the most in your fondest dreams that you could aim for?
Um, the one-point-six, the one-point-six effect size is really what we're aiming for. So when we look at those blue section, the zone of desired effects, that's where we know we're gonna get the most return on our investment. Doesn't mean that some of those others aren't good. We just know that, like, part of those are foundational, and the other, we know we're actually gonna see, um, significant returns on our investment if we go after those. Like explicit instruction is a great example of that.
And you notice a big, big part of it is based on the teacher.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
And I think that's why when we're really focusing on professional learning and we talk about building that, the expertise, the classroom teacher, that, that's really at the, the heart of what instructional rounds serves to do is increase that capacity of that teacher because that is really where the rubber hits the road in terms of kids and learning.
Okay. Uh, so I do wanna share that our instructional leadership team on, at both schools, um, really focuses on distributed leadership. It's not just administrators leading the work. Um, of course, building leadership is part of it. Um, myself, um, and Ryan Ranger, who's one of my assistant principals, we lead the instructional work. Um, Colleen Schwartz leads our PBIS work. Mark gets the fun job of being our testing coordinator, which is something that very few people want to do. Uh, he loves it, yeah, he's a former testing coordinator. Uh, but the point being that we try to really in, include as many people at the administrative level as possible. We also have our instructional coach, who is integral not just to our instructional leadership team process for planning meetings, for facilitating meetings, um, for coaching teachers, for creating streamlined systems. Um, Dustin Worm has really become, and I know you would say the same thing about Ally, um, become integral in both the instructional supports that we have in place for students and teachers, um, as well as those non-academic supports as well that Jeremy's gonna talk about. So just doing a, a tremendous amount of heavy lifting, um, to support our staff, um, and students. Uh, we, of course, have department-level leadership, so our department heads are part of it, and we have teacher leaders too, 'cause we want to hear, um, from lots of different voices. We'd like to hear their perspective instructionally as well. Um, so our librarian is part of our, my team. Um, I have a special education teacher who's part of my team as well. Um, all of these people help to inform and, um, plan our professional development, support of our teachers, um, so that our middle school community experiences the best possible professional development that they can. Um, as far as our PD is concerned, I'm gonna take it in three chunks. Um, we have, um, building-level professional development, which, um, is kicked off by a unified August launch. We actually are bringing together, um, both of our staffs at East and West Middle School to do a shared launch at East Middle School. Um, again, just making sure that they hear the same message, they, uh, have the opportunity to collaborate with even more people. Um, we think that it's gonna be really powerful and, and help to accelerate that growth right out of the gate. Um, our staff meetings, which, um, happen the first two Tuesdays of the month, have really shifted from, um, you know, this could've been an email-type of meetings to true professional development. So much so that I've had staff asked if they could get DPBD for our, for our staff meetings now because they feel like it's become a much richer, much more, um, professionally-focused, um, process and time, which is great. That's great feedback for us. Um, of course, we also have our targeted coaching, uh, through our, our coach. Um, so our coach has the ability to impact, you know, it's kind of like those, uh, tiers that we talked about for kids. We have our staff meetings with our tier-one, everybody gets it, and then our instructional coach can really work individually with people who need a little bit more, which is great. Um, talking to, uh, prospective candidates in the interview process. When you talk about, um, attracting and retaining staff, having a coach on staff is a huge attraction for people. They think that's a really great support to have, and that actually, um, has been a, a positive talking point for me, uh, for our building as well. Um, and for retaining staff, that support is just invaluable.
Are those coaches teachers?
Um, they, they're dedicated coaches, uh, former teachers.
Okay.
So, yeah, so Dustin was a so- social studies teacher, um, a year before. He had a partially reduced schedule.
Got it, okay.
And now he's a dedicated, um, coach.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So still very fresh on, on the classroom work. Yeah, thanks for that clarifier.
Does he go back into the classroom at some point just to keep his, uh, antennas fresh?
Well, he's in the classroom all the time observing. Um, he is, he is in and out of the classroom, um, all the time. So he's constantly invited in by staff, um, to watch their instruction, to give pointers. But he also does his own, um, objective data collection as well. Um, he and Ally went around and they collected, um, I think it was fifteen hundred, does that sound right? Fifteen hundred moments in time, just to paint the picture of what instruction is like at West Middle School. So he would sit in a classroom, look at a kid, and then basically, um, uh, measure what level of engagement was displayed in that moment. And then twenty seconds later, do the same thing for another student. And gathered, um, you know, a pretty clear picture from all of these isolated pixels, uh, of student engagement about what engagement looks like at West Middle School. Ally did a similar thing. Um, and that information was actually used by us to help build our problem of practice. We presented that to our staff and asked, what do you see? What do we need to work on? Um, so that's part of that staff input in that problem of practice. It was really, really a cool thing to be able to gather that volume of data.
And we talk about too, so the, at West and East Middle School, so Ally Sullivan is in the same role, that teacher-coach. We talk about the feedback and, and that data collection, that teacher advocacy, right? Believing in that we can do this with the right tools and time, and we've got that time and structure and space. And using our own site data really allows teachers to reflect on their best practice and making sure that the moves that we're making are, is explicit to them and their moves, uh, with the kids that they're in front of every day, right? So having that coach and having the time for them to really get in, look at the feedback, bring it back to that building leadership team that Suterman described right there as well, is really impactful and speeds up the positive progress we see within all the classrooms.
So for PLCs, we're gonna shift. Um, we have six PLCs a year, and if you can kind of picture, three of those happening, we'll say first semester, three of those happening in second semester. Um, the first two PLCs are-
Can you explain PLC?
Yes, professional learning communities. Oh, I knew it. I, I had been doing so well. I was being very intentional. Thank you for the reminder up until then. Um, so our professional learning community is basically groups of teachers that come together to, um, talk very intentionally about instruction. Um, these groups of teachers are, um, across different curricular areas, 'cause we don't want them to talk about math necessarily. We want them to talk about teaching and learning. So it helps to cross-pollinate, if you will, um, instructional practices between disciplines. So we don't have one thing happening in math, another thing happening in, in ELA, for example. We really wanna have uniform, um, research-based practices across all disciplines. So, um, our PLCs, we have, uh, three first semester. And if we focus on that, the first PLC, um, uses research-based protocols to have teachers basically tune lessons. The lesson will be focused on our problem of practice, which we'll talk about shortly. Again, that problem of practice is aligned with, um, those, uh, pre-AP principles and the explicit instruction that we talked about earlier. So really targeted, um, work, targeted lesson plans. Um, they'll tune lessons, basically pitch a lesson to somebody. You can kind of think of it like lesson Shark Tank. Here's what I'm thinking with the lesson, um, here's how I'm gonna assess this, here's my formative checks, what feedback do you have? And there's a whole, um, protocol that guides that conversation, so it's very focused, very targeted. Those protocols are coming to us from the National School Reform faculty, um, which, they've been kicking out protocols, uh, for a number of years. Um, I actually use that again up in West Senior High in my, my instructional round stays. After teachers, uh, tune their lessons, they actually go out and teach the lessons. And at the next PLC, roughly a month later, they bring back evidence of student work. So what learning occurred? Did it match what you predicted? What's next? What did you do to remediate that learning? So really looking critically at, at those learning outcomes and keeping that, um, that data at the forefront. 'Cause it's not just about those big three times a year data points, it's about what's happening day-to-day in the classroom that matters as well. And that's really where those opportunities to adjust exist. Now, instructional rounds comes in, um, mid-year, and again, at the end of the school year, providing us with, um, observational data from our outside rounds team. And I'm gonna explain this in, in greater detail here soon. Um, but essentially, that rounds data will allow us to have, um, objective observers look at instruction across classrooms. So they're not necessarily focused on what's going on in any one classroom, but what patterns and trends exist across, uh, the school. Um, and then they'll put forth actionable recommendations, which is really, I think, key to that rounds process. Okay, so instructional rounds. I get a little fired up. I'll try to keep it brief. Instructional rounds really focuses on this question of how do professionals get better at what they do? Um, Harvard lifted it from the medical rounds process. Um, it lived in TCAPs around twenty-thirteen-ish, you know, a little, for, I think we had about two, three good years, solid years.
Twenty-fifteen was the last year.
Okay.
Yep.
So for a, a brief amount of time, we had really rich, focused instructional rounds network in TCAPs, and we also worked with our surrounding district, districts. I remember I went up to, uh, Northport and, um, engaged in the rounds process up there. Um, prior to twenty-thirteen, there was some research that we worked collaboratively with, um, Harvard to actually do. That was before my time. My West Middle School teachers keep me into that, and I was very thankful that they helped me to understand that as well. So not only, um, was TCAPs integral in the research that helped to write the book, um, but we actually implemented the processes as well. Um, each rounds event, uh, basically is composed of three parts. There is classroom observations, there's a debriefing, and then there's a focus on that next level of work, which is really the power of the rounds process. Um, you can see from this, um, slide, this, this is actually taken from our, um, rounds that we did in May, which sounds like a crazy time to introduce anything at a middle school. You know, you'd think we'd have our hands full. But I have to tell you, our staff, um, received, uh, instructional rounds with open arms. Um, we did, at both sites, um, let staff opt out. I had one staff member who opted out because she had a doctor's appointment. I mean, that's an incredibly high level of buy-in. They were so stoked to have people come in their classrooms. Um, doors were open and they were really excited for that process to be launched again. In this picture, though, you'll see members from, um, the elementary school level. You'll see, um, people from West Senior High, uh, Central High School, East Middle School. We have coaches, we have administrators. So again, a lot of, um, diverse perspectives getting eyes on the instruction in that building to offer feedback. Um, sometimes you, you, you aren't always aware of the things that you live every day. It's kind of like when you go on vacation, you come back to your house, and you're like, my house smells like this? You're just not aware of those things that you're, that i- is embedded in your life every day. Um, same thing with rounds. I mean, there's, there's little ah-hahs and huge changes that we really need to consider, all that move the needle in the right direction, which is what we're trying to do. So the rounds process, and I'm gonna give you a very brief overview of each one of these. Um, we share a foundational understanding, much of what you've already gotten from me, um, today about, you know, Harvard and kind of our work as a district. Um, we go through beliefs, assurances, and norms, ensuring that we have a safe environment and a respectful environment in which to go into other people's space. Um, we have observational calibration to make sure that the, um, observations that are coming back to us are, um, objective, that they actually, um, say something concrete, and there isn't, you know, wiggle room in their terms like a lot or most. You know, what does that really mean? Um, they go out and do their observation, and then they put forth their recommendations. Um, characteristics of rounds, again, that, uh, collective, uh, collegial, uh, environment and really a safe environment, it's not evaluative. Um, we aren't asking people to come in and, um, problem solve, like find problems, but rather help us problem solve. Um, it's a process that's ongoing, and it's really anchored in that instructional core. What's going on between the teacher, the student, um, that content and the task. What's going on between the teacher, the student, that content, and the task? So what is actually, what learning is happening in that classroom? Our observers commit to staying on task, you know, just like a set of norms that help to guide their work as well. The calibration process, we actually take them through this, and we ask them to hold up their fingers. Which one of these provides you with the most descriptive, objective data possible? If you look at the first grade column, one, two, or three. The middle grade, middle column, one, two, or three. And we have conversations around which type of observation we're really looking for here. The East Middle School problem of practice, and feel free to chime in. You can see that it is really focused on those academic conversations. Each problem of practice, and I know it's very wordy. It basically sets the stage for the observers, sets kind of, here's the conditions, here's where we've been, here's where we're going. And then it gives them a set of focus questions to help guide their observations so that people aren't observing all of these things that aren't connected to the problem of practice. We wanna be really careful that the feedback that we have is connected to the problem of practice because then it allows us to act on the problem of practice. Similarly, West Middle School, we again have this intentional focus on conversations, on engagement. I am gonna be working with my instructional leadership team to more clearly articulate those academic conversations. Like I said, we received some feedback at the end of the school year about rounds, and that's going to be part of that conversation. And then our teams go out in small groups of roughly four people to the classrooms. They pop in, they've got their note sheet. East Middle School had them go out for three rounds of twenty minutes. We had four rounds of fifteen minutes. We just happened to make the decision to have them get in one more classroom. But essentially, they go in and they observe the learning that's taking place, using those guiding questions to help to organize their observations. Then, after they go out and visit the classrooms, they come back. They have a moment to gather their thoughts, so individual reflection. Highlight those observations that are most related to that problem of practice. They then get into groups and form visual that shows patterns that they saw. Some contrasts, some things that might not have matched from classroom to classroom. Evidence of the problem of practice. And then questions they have. And there's often really good things that, again, you just don't think about when you live it every day. After those group themes, then they put forward next level of work. And that's really the coolest part of the rounds process. On the screen, you'll see, this is just a picture from one group. So this isn't even all of it. We had this times four as our feedback that we were able to, to provide to our staff. But you can see that they worked through formulating a high degree of recommendations. We actually asked them, you know, give us some things we could do next week. Like what's that low-hanging fruit that you think we could adjust and improve instruction next week? How about next month? And then I selfishly asked them next year, they helped me launch my professional development for this year, which is always a good thing to, again, have that outside set of eyes as well. The last thing that I, I just wanna close with before I take any questions you have is that the rounds process, it doesn't just benefit our school, but it benefits everybody who's a part of it as well. I think the rounds process, more than, you know, many things that I participated in, it helps to really professionalize and sustain the work of our educators. And I think that the rounds process will not only help West Middle School and East Middle School, but every single school that sends a participant to be a part of that process, which is, is quite incredible.
What other schools in our area are doing the rounds?
Outside of TCAPS? I know the ISD is. We did work with the ISD Rite Tech Center on some rounds. I am not aware of other-
Not, and not in a sustained way? You think there's some one-off?
They're starting to boot it up. I mean, Northport, Leland as well, as I know they came over to West High School, Leland's team did. I, I actually, you know, as our superintendent's group, two years ago brought it up. I'm like, you know, this is something that was, you know, as I had done all of my interviews with everybody, it was something that, you know, they just kept coming back and back and back from staff of, that was like the most impactful thing we did, and it just kind of dissolved. And it dissolved in the entire ISD, to be honest with you. And so I brought that back. And one of the things that, at the ISD level, they've done is as superintendents, we have gone to other districts to take a look at that element. You know, there, there are hard things to do with it. Like, you know, we're trying to figure out how to do it, you know. At one point, it was when you had lots of subs, you could, you know, have teachers, you know, go and do that. And so you gotta look at, are there different ways for us to do that? You know, I, I wondering even is technology something in the future that can help? You know, that's one of the things to try and, and also still figure out in this. That's one of the reasons that it died, you know, in that aspect. But, but there, there is some work in that and, and other schools and which, you know, may in the end be able to help us as well, that, you know, maybe they have a PD day that's different than our day. And maybe, you know, there's a bit of ability to swap. We'll see in the future. But right now, we're staying very consistent with the model that our team got trained in and believed in. That might be a touch different than a little bit of the work, I think, that's happening across the ISD. So right now, we're, we're staying pretty solid with our, our model.
And we have, we did do one optional, like it's just an internal round at West Woods this year. So we talked a lot about the impact of subs they have on the system. And that was one of the reasons that we got feedback why it didn't continue on way back when, I think, is what, you probably heard the same thing. And so looking at how we can pair schools that are close proximity together to be able to mitigate some of that, so we're able to still provide that opportunity. Because the feedback overwhelmingly from teachers was, I felt respected as a professional, and I grew by seeing other teachers' instruction in the classroom and was able to reflect with colleagues in a way that actually moved my, you know, moved learning in the classroom for the teachers. So it's been a great reboot. This year, we had all middle school and high schools, with the exception of TC High do it. The rest are on board next year, elementary and TC High for next year to participate.
So just a clarifying question, the, the, those that are doing the rounds, going into a classroom, are teachers?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay, and are you-
As well as administrators.
So there's teachers from the building, there's teachers from schools throughout the district. Administrators, we have coaches from the elementary school level.
Okay.
So broad range.
And then, you, you don't necessarily take like a science teacher that's gonna go into another science classroom? You really keep it as, okay.
Yeah.
I always wondered, okay.
Like teachers.
Okay.
Yeah, and we had talked about, actually before this, we talked about like doing a demo and having you watch a video and go through the process. And we're like, we do not have enough time for that, nor probably a good understanding. But what we did talk about is next year, perhaps, if you would like to join one of our rounds sessions, to come in and actually experience that whole process. It's, it's very impactful if you see it in person.
I can see where this is team building, you know? And I, I am an advocate of, of strong teams. This is not medical rounds, in any way, shape, or form.
Yeah.
And there's two kinds of medical rounds. One is when you're handing a patient off to the next person that's coming in to take care of that patient. You're not handing a classroom off to another teacher to take that classroom, right? So-
No.
That kind of rounds is not, and those are teaching rounds.
Yeah.
The second kind of rounds is when you take a department, and what happens is somebody gets the joy of being the hot seat, and they do a case presentation. And they present it to the group, and there can be comments and questions that come in on that. A lot of times, that is not always, usually it's a younger person that's presenting the case, and they're teaching rounds in a different way. They are not always collegial. So to think that this is teaching rounds, I don't know where they came from, from, from a medical standpoint. I can see where you can spend a fair amount of time and focus on building, you know, a sense of a team. I'm still trying to wrap my head around that, because it is expensive. It's an expensive model.
Depending on how you do it. I do wonder with some technology and recordings and some of that, that it helps out from some of that, you know?
Swivels and-
Yep.
Right.
So you don't have somebody out of the classroom with subs, and it's able to be done after school or- So like when you look at national board certification now for teachers, that's all done on a video model where the teacher records themselves, and then they go through that process that it's sent to a group of an expert panel to, you know, identify those strengths and those elements required for national board certification, for example. So those are those things we are gonna grapple with, with this.
I would say that it's a great bang for the buck, considering how much positive feedback and how much improvement teachers are feeling and getting.
And that goes to, you know, our hopes for seeing that impact for student achievement. If you look at the effect size, that's exactly what their problems of practice focus on, of seeing those one point six effect size by the strategies that they're looking at in their problem of practice. It's, it's just, I would encourage you to go through the process because I remember my first, I'm, my first time going through a rounds process, it's just eye-opening to think about the learning that occurs when you have a diverse group of people actually doing the observations versus- You get, we, we actually talked about this in our conversation. You get so into your building and your pieces that if bringing other people in for the outside look, you forget about things. They have a different lens, they look at things differently. It's so important to that piece for improving instruction.
So we have an opportunity to do that as board members?
Yes, yes. That's what, that's what we're-
Are there any cons to this, like any, any negatives that, any complaints?
Other than the cost being the concern, I, no, we didn't have any complaints coming out of the process.
You know, you, you, you could have the teacher that feels very nervous of a colleague coming in, you know, and could even-
Or a board member.
Or a board member, so, right. I was just probably gonna say, you know, that, that. So it is something that we would ask a teacher, obviously, if it's a little comfortability before we did that, obviously.
That's respect.
But, you know, that's, that's sometimes is the hard part that, you know, sometimes people get real nervous when people come in and, and, you know. And, and the important part is, is that the rounds is not a part of our evaluation process. It's really important that that be clearly identified. You know, because if people are going to let their guard down and take feedback in that element, that's not the place when they're, you know, trying to be vulnerable to do so. So that's really an important part that has to be clearly defined, and, and we've done that with our teacher group.
And the cost is really time, right? Staff time.
Time and subs.
And the getting of subs.
Yep.
How many times did you say you do this per year?
Uh, twice.
Twice?
Yeah.
So, okay. So every teacher had the benefit of being rounded?
Well, there's not enough, there's not enough observers to go around necessarily, but every teacher had the benefit of being able to say, yes, my classroom is open. So they had the opportunity to opt in. And then depending on the number of participants, then they go out to those classrooms.
And as more schools come on board, we have more opportunities for teachers to visit other, other schools.
And we are gonna track and be mindful of making sure that if a teacher says they want a, a group in, that we, we get there. Maybe not in the first rounds event, but the second.
So like this, I say, can we get smarter with, if we have a PD day and, you know, and, and a Leland and a Northport have, you know, have school that day? You know, do we have an ability to go up there and observe their teachers? Another day where we have class and they have a PD day, can they come in and do that? That's where, if we can get good with this and look at all those, yeah, look at all those innovative ways that we might be able to do that. That's what we wanna try and figure out. Because we do recognize that, that's one reason why it died last time. Is there a way using these innovative ideas and thoughts that we can keep it going from that point? That has been on my mind from literally the beginning.
Because wouldn't you say you, you get benefit from being an observer too? Right? So you're, you, both, both sides of the equation are learning and the experience. So anytime a teacher has the opportunity to go into somebody else's classroom, they go, oh, I didn't think of that.
When you see an engagement strategy-
Yeah.
Of a teacher that is a rock star and, and, and that and grouping strategies, you just sit and go, I don't do that.
Yep.
You know, and, and, you know, obviously, there's an effect size on that. I've never thought or had anybody show me how to do that. And then I'm going to now take that back and figure out how I can do that in my classroom. That's the secret sauce.
Right.
And even the last-
I was just gonna say, which in turn hopefully improves student achievement.
Right. So, so there's that side, and then there's the curriculum side. So we talked about, you know, do we have an active curriculum? Is it aligned? Is it all those things? So there's these two halves to this thing that, you know, we have to attack both sides.
So one class doesn't get too far behind or too far ahead?
You have to have a scope and C-clutch, that's correct.
So I had a question, how do you sustain what they, what the teachers have learned between the rounds? You, you know, because initially, you get this big, oh, all these great takeaways, and they might implement. And then how do you prevent them sliding into old habits? I mean, it's just human nature for any of us.
You have to keep it top of mind, right? So bringing that data back, engaging the staff in making sense of the data and the recommendations that the rounds group puts forth. But also, that's really the work of our, of our monthly staff meetings, to keep those strategies fresh, to have a certain degree of supportive collegial accountability with the PLCs, where they plan a lesson and bring student work back. That sustains the work and keeps it alive. Because you're right, one-and-dones don't transform learning across the board. We have to have it be sustained, and we have to keep it top of mind for our teachers. And we have a lot of touchpoints throughout the year to, to do so as well, which is why having such a streamlined focus is critical. We just keep coming back to it over and over and over.
And so that problem of practice and observational practice still occurs, is not just occurring at rounds time.
Right.
So between instructional coaches coming in and doing that, and you'd have, you do have informal and formal evaluation where you're going to look to see, am I seeing these things displayed, you know, in those, you know, two-minute walkthroughs, you know, that administrators are in classrooms seeing, and then obviously formal evaluations.
I agree, somebody who's been trying to make a comment.
Yeah. Thank you.
Me, I'd like to add too, just the, you know, looking at the rounds process, right? There's obviously natural limitations on who can be in classrooms and who's opening the classrooms. This last year, we both had a staff meeting that was focused on sharing that feedback and closing the loop with, the loop with rounds, right? So even if you weren't a part of that process, you were able to look at those short-term and long-term recommendations so that everyone was on the same page, trying to support that efficacy piece and, and being in the know. And we talk about, you know, the, the day of rounds and people even energized about this new thing they wanna try. Another thing that we've done at our instructional team meetings and staff meetings is have individual teachers set goals and then follow up on those goals and feedback, which is a huge proponent too of our coach. So our coach is able to work with our instructional team and review some of those individual goals, goals and provide specific strategies that they can use at our, you know, low prep time, you know, high, high effect size, that are in alignment with their goal from either that rounds process to kind of monitor. Because if you don't monitor, right, and you don't make it a priority, it's really easy for those things to fall off. So pairing that with our whole staff meeting, making sure it's in alignment with our staff feedback data, is really important to the success. And taking the time to collect the staff feedback and doing something with it that's a clear plan has been really successful the last two years with the rounds.
What percentage of classes do you think have been rounded on? Is that correct?
Coin of verse, didn't I?
I, I think, that's a new term, but I think I'm gonna carry that forward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we had, I'm trying to think, we had four sessions, and we had, I think, roughly twenty, sixteen to twenty classrooms on our first event that our staff went around to.
Yours is very similar, yep.
So after, you know, two rounds events, it would be the majority of our, of our classrooms. And again, it's a little hit or miss. If somebody's on prep, we can't visit them. You know, we had, like I said, a staff member who was absent. So I would say about a third of our teaching staff with that one event had a visiting rounds team.
And has it made any difference on behavior issues with some of the kids?
To have groups of adults in there?
Well, not just that, but also giving you pointers on different ways to deal with problems.
Yeah, absolutely. We know that students who are actively engaged in the learning, they don't have to create their own excitement in the classroom, which is often where, you know, the behavioral issues stem from. So that's why engagement, particularly at the middle school level, is so critically important, because it has the power to really extinguish some of those behavioral concerns that can come up from off-task students as well. So yeah, that's a really powerful point, that it's not just academic return on that rounds investment, but also that behavioral return on investment too.
Somehow, there's a lesson there for parents with cell phones. Me included.
And, and we also have a short video. Again, no time to show it, but it's in there for you to access and look at and kind of like the process of instructional rounds before you participate.
Will the, will the slide presentation be posted to our website, or has it already been?
Uh, yep.
Okay. It's been, it's been shared with you. Yeah, but I just meant for the public as well, to be able to access it.
There were more slides tonight than I got.
No?
Not typically.
Can we make it available to the public? I mean, the slideshow? Yeah, I mean, it's good information. Okay, sounds good. And I printed my, my slides out like last week, so I'll go back in.
Probably saw her typo rate.
We did a few last minute cleanups, so. The bulk of it's here.
I get it, it's a work in progress.
Yeah, exactly, thank you. I like that girl mindset, thank you.
Thursday, Friday.
It's cool.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right, so um out of the puzzle pieces that we've talked about, as a middle school assistant principal, our job is really working with our students and our staff, right, to ensure that all of these positive supports are happening, right? So when we talk about data, a lot of time we look at the quantitative data that Heidi described with M step and PSAT and NWA. We talk about instructional leadership uh within our teachers and what's going on in those classrooms. And then we really want to be able to connect that work with our instructional response, noting that all of that work that's happening needs to be monitored. And our students are engaging with the instructional response. They're creating the data at those assessments that we're we're basically assessing them at. And we want to monitor what's going on in our schools. We can talk about all the systems that we've put in place and all the work that we're doing, but it's our job to really ensure that that work is happening. And then if that work is not happening, what are we going to do and what systems are we going to leverage to be able to support our students? So uh my job today is really to talk to you about our student support team and how we're monitoring students to make sure that we're providing resources for all students to be successful. When we sat down in this planning meeting and talked about like what what is our work and why is it important? And and my job as assistant principal, working with kids, is that we we need to get in and do the work. So with the the vision and mission of the TKSCP is looking at really creating that educational community that's using resources relentlessly. And I really like the word relentlessly because we continue to work with our students, our staff and our families to support all learners. And middle school is an interesting time of life for everyone. I'm sure we could all reflect back on the time we were in middle school, maybe a specific moment or two, where students are going to be presented with challenges and may not have the skills or supports needed to be successful. Currently this year, I'm moving into eighth grade, so I actually, the group of students that I started working with was in sixth grade. And being able to work with them from sixth, seventh and eighth grade in loop with our students as assistant principals has been phenomenal to get to know not only the students, but also the families so that as we talk about supports and learners, it's coming from a place of of care, that we want to do everything we can to remove those barriers so that all of our kids that are stepping foot in our school can be successful. That's really the work that we're grounded with every single day. The two quotes that are on there from the compass that really resonated with us when we talked about this is the additional resource. You know, we talk about tier one and and being effective for about eighty to eighty-five percent of our students. We do have tier two and tier three supports that are available to meet our learners where they're at and make sure that they can access the curriculum instruction. And then what are those strategies for identifying and implementing? So having been a sixth grade assistant principal and inheriting groups of fifth graders from various elementaries, those students coming from different schools and being with twenty five students in a smaller classroom to now being with eight hundred and fifty kids in a school and moving through inherently presents a myriad of challenges that they haven't faced before. So taking that into account and making sure that we as a school have planned those strategies, making sure that we're supporting them and addressing behaviors to maximize the learning as it really our number one goal. And that work starts in sixth grade and continues with them from sixth, seventh into eighth grade. And just talking about uh my the group that I have right now, the amount of support is extremely intensive in sixth grade. That's a really big time for them to be able to transition. And I would also say that as much as the students need support, our parents that are bringing their kids to us, right, and sharing their kids with us need additional support as well. And we have a lot of systems in place that I'll talk about in detail in terms of that transition process from fifth into sixth. The the key questions we like to think about is when we support students, right? So these are our guiding questions that'll lead our work today are what are the systems in place to support all students? Identifying tier one, tier two and tier three. How do we monitor to know that's working? Because if we have those systems that are in place, uh we're gonna, we can't just assume that they're gonna work. We've got to be able to monitor, observe, collect feedback and data and do something with that to ensure those students are meeting those expectations and have the tools and support to do that. And then lastly, what is our response? So we have all of this data. We have all this feedback. We have all these observations. What do we do with it to help our students and our families perform to the best of their ability? When we look at fifth into sixth transition, we talked as a team about this. And having experienced this um as a sixth grade assistant principal, we've really uh kind of hung our hat on the fact that we've thought of all of the components of what it takes to go from fifth into sixth. So our grade level principals who are getting our group of sixth grade students, visit their elementary schools. We have the fifth grade students visit the campus between West Middle School and East Middle School in order to acclimate them with the environment. We also invite their parents in uh for orientation night so that they can they can get all the information they need, meet our staff, because it's really about establishing those relationships that we can leverage in order to help our kids. The eighth grade students that are in both of our sites, both West Middle and East Middle, basically act as ambassadors for the school and support students to talk about those positive relationships and guide them. And they also get it from a student perspective. I can tell them from a from an assistant principal perspective, what I think is important and all the systems that are in place, but hearing it from the students as well is a different lens for our our parents also. This second bullet point on the left, I think, is is probably one of the most valuable things that we've really done on both sides of town. It's the student data collection, how it's reviewed and then acted upon. All of our students who are transitioning from the various elementary schools into sixth grade, whether at East Middle School or West Middle School, have a myriad of data points that we review to make sure that we know that student when they are at our school. So this all happens in the winter into the spring process before they get to us. So this is not something where we get all this data and they're showing up and it's the first week of school and we're trying to make these plans and establish relationships. The majority of this work happens the the school year prior and also in August, uh when we have some uh proactive parent meetings as well. So it's hard to read on there, but some of the things uh you can kind of see. So on the left hand side, to connect the point about um data, right? So NWA, PSAT, M, uh excuse me, NWA, PSAT and M step for different students. Where are those students? And that data actually changes as they take those tests from sixth, seventh into eighth. And a very similar process that you'll hear at the high school session from eighth into ninth also will happen. You'll see in the kind of tan section towards the right hand side too. We'll talk about if students have a five oh four or if they receive special education services. If attendance or truancy has been a problem, we know all of that information before the kids get to us and that information is shared and acted upon with the teachers. So for example, if a student's coming into our building from fifth into sixth, those teachers will know what the five oh four plan says, how they can plan for it, how they're grouping, how they can support that student. Same thing for our special education, for accommodations. If truancy or uh attendance has been a concern as well, we partner with uh Don Mormon and the ISD also, who comes over and helps us reach out, does family visits at home, uh and actually invites parents in and talk to them as well. So all of the the aspects that make students successful academically in our school and non academically are considered before they arrive uh on campus. The positive behavior intervention support uh that we refer to as PBS is really targeted for sixth grade. So when we sat down as a team and both sites did this, we talk about from start of the day to end of the day. So literally, how did, how are kids gonna get into the building, right? When they get into the building, where are they gonna go? Who are the trusted adults that they can talk to? How do they move from class to class? How do they acquire their resources if they have issues with their Chromebook? How does that work? Passing time, all of those things that make up that kid's day are explicitly taught to them, modeled by our teachers three different times, specifically at the beginning of the year and then two other points throughout the year as well. So those expectations that we want kids to be successful need to be very explicit and taught to them, modeled and then monitored as well. On the right hand side, this is kind of the the parent side of things. We do have registration meetings for students and parents, which is actually a really great time just to have that initial conversation for parents to meet our staff, assistant principals, uh building principal, counselor, social worker, anybody that their kid may interact with with supports, to be able to have that initial meeting and have conversations. And then those proactive uh parent support meetings, right? If we have information about a student who is in need of additional supports, we want to act on that. We want to reach out to them and establish that relationship, invite them in and have those proactive conversations to make sure that we're doing everything we can to support those students as well.
Do we always do six, seventh, eighth? What did we used to do?
Looping, you mean?
Yeah.
With assistant principals?
Yeah.
I've been there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can say for nine years, that's one, that's one year that we have have done. We've traveled with the kids. And it's not just the um assistant principals, but it's also that office core support staff, so their counselor, um their administrative assistant. You get your people and they stick with you, which is pretty cool.
Helps those parents too.
Yeah, it does. It 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 does. It 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 takes this big building with lots of people and you get your small group of people who support you. So it does help, yeah, that's a good point.
And just the longevity of those relationships, right? As much as it's important to to meet the the parents and the students and get to know them, right? It's that level of trust that we're making those decisions and utilizing those supports with their kids' best interests in mind, right, over a longer period of time as well, so. Uh, my work is very similar tier to the uh instructional supports. And Kristin mentioned this earlier about the student support team. So in tier one, uh we do have that positive behavior intervention support. Uh, I'll go into that here in just a moment. We talked about those best instructional practices with instruction rounds. How do we monitor those high effect size strategies for all students? And again, that's their tier one. All of our students are getting that and it's effective for about eighty to eighty-five per percent of our students. But noting that our kids are coming to us at different levels, that they may need additional support. And where I'm going to spend the majority of my time is at tier two support, the student support team intervention uh here in just a moment. Our PBIS team, uh I know West Middle School has done something very similar to us as well, so we're very much in alignment, going back to that efficacy piece, right? Having that commitment to what we know is good for kids, being consistent with their expectations and having common language is really important. So the two goal areas that we do for all of our students, that first goal is to create, sustain a common vision. So when our kids are coming into our school, they know what our expectations are for behaviors, for academics, and our coach modeled into that as well. And what additional supports are available to them to be successful? Whether that might be lunch bunch, a connection with their counselor for organizational skills, whatever their need may be, uh is very clear to them. The second goal that we really talk about for PBIS is we talk about the behavior piece, noting that in middle school, as you mentioned about building their own excitement into lessons at times. We want to make sure that we're spending our time on the academics and our instruction. So inherently, what are those behaviors we can anticipate? And how can we decrease those behaviors so the majority of our time is spent on teaching and learning? I put this graphic up here. We use this with our PBIS team, which is a very robust team. It does have our, so it's made up of teachers, building leadership, um our counselors, social workers, admin assistants as well. We try to hit all of the components of the student's day so that we can get feedback from each one of those people and talk about what types of supports they may need at tier one. On the left hand side, we want to be very explicit on what it is, right? So it's grounded in improving those academic outcomes um through making sure that we're very clear about what the expectations are. And then looking at data, right? This isn't something that we're just going off on a whim or some pre package that we've purchased that's saying, hey, we we think this is good. We're using our student data in observations to make some decisions on what's what we think is best for our kids in terms of teaching and learning and what supports they may actually need. The the bulleted items here that I think are most important to to look at is it's a systems approach, right? So we're not waiting for things to happen. We want to be very proactive and look at what are those practices and systems that are in place and what are the targeted supports that we can utilize when we know students need additional supports. The targeted lessons uh are really important. We have anywhere from like, I believe, thirty to forty different targeted lessons, like I mentioned with sixth grade, but also seventh and eighth grade in terms of what are those behavior supports and expectations that they need in order to have their focus on their academics. The second bullet point on there, looking at the behavior data, I'll go into in just a moment. We look at office discipline referrals. So if students are off task in a class and there's a referral that's put into place, those types of things are looking, are we look at to be able to collect the data to make some decisions on what additional supports either need to be built in, ramped up or modified? And that data is reviewed monthly with our whole PBIS team and our behavior dashboard as well. The behavior dashboard that I just referenced is a a snapshot on there, um so you can kind of get a a gist of what we're looking at. There's inherently a lot of information uh us as a team or a PBIS team can look at about areas of improvement to create individualized supports. So you get this broad snapshot of what's happening and then we can drill down to look at who are the individuals that may need additional support. So I know it's kind of hard to see on there, but it talks about where the incidents might be happening. What are the areas of support and what are some of those interventions that have been taking place? One of the things that we've leaned on very heavily in with the middle school, both at West and East Middle School, has been the restorative practice and restorative process. So we know when there is conflict that's happened or a behavior has occurred, we really want to leverage our counselors and social workers as well as assistant principals to sit down and have conversations about what what went wrong, um what were you thinking of at time? What can we do to support you and have that reflective conversation? Because we know that the middle school time is a very formidable time for them to reflect on their behavior and know what supports are in place to be able to help them. The student support team, I really want to spend some time on. So this is actually a group of people who uh are focusing on individual students. So we've kind of uh painted the landscape of our PBIS tier one support, both behaviorally and academically and teaching those expectations. And we want to look at the tier two focus. So our tier two focus is our student support team. And when we look at uh concerns that are brought to us from staff, usually teachers, we categorize them as academic or non academic. So when you look at that list, it's a pretty comprehensive list that students are encountering within our schools and systems that we have in place to be able to support them. So for example, the the left hand side, uh we utilize positive support plans for students who may be displaying a challenging behavior or may need some additional support to be able to move throughout their day. Uh, a lot of our students, as they come into middle school and as they go through middle school, struggle with organization, right? So it may be something as simple as taking the time and meeting with them and talk about organization. We have tier two social work within both of our schools and looking at attendance support as well. So moving into the middle school, there's inherently that shift in responsibility where the students are starting to mature and starting to get older. So we want to be able to talk about what they can do proactively to be able to help them be successful in school.
That's the trails program.
Excuse me. So our trails program is used at both West Middle and East Middle. Our counselors do that. So it's actually a program that our counselors use in support with uh parent permission to teach some of our students strategies uh that they may be lacking when they come into the middle school to be successful.
It's out of University of Michigan, wasn't it?
Yeah, it is.
You remember, we had some advocacy of local, you know, uh medical doctors that in the um social work and those elements that it was supporting the ISD to help with support on that and that's something that.
You can actually Google the trails uh out of University of Michigan and you'll get a whole bunch of information. You will love it.
It's a good day's recap.
We got dedicated funding for that, right?
Um, the ISD did, you know, from support, but we don't, I believe, directly, right?
The the support comes in in people, right? To support the trails and the the training has been completely free. So we have been able to train all of our counseling staff and our social workers.
We have a um social worker, I imagine, that's going to be official as well. At tier two training there is a, we have a social restroom living tier one and lots of resources at tier one and then tier two as well. And all three.
Thank you. Uh, the academic side, we talk about that. So our uh tier two map and ELA support that Kristin talked about earlier. The third bullet point on there, SST referrals, so it's our student support team referral. So we have, our team is our grade level principal, our coach uh at both sites. So Ally Sullivan does a phenomenal job of running this student support team um and getting referrals from teachers. So if a teacher has a concern, either academic or non academic, they basically alert our team and say, hey, I have some concerns about maybe attendance, I have some concerns about some engagement, or I have some concerns about, you know, math uh ability or strategies. And that that comes to our team to basically start this very robust process that I'll subscribe in just a moment.
Can I say one thing? So again, Ally Sullivan is the instructional coach at East Middle School, but also supporting behavior, as we talked about, kind of that split role in that element. So it's really important, like that's a role she has of helping, you know, to organize all that behavior at East Middle.
And she's been, and I know to some, I'm the same thing at your site. So uh they've kind of taken the lead on the SST process this last year and it has been phenomenal in terms of the communication, the implementation of plans, monitoring and making sure that the work of our team has been monitored, uh but also acted upon in a very positive way. I can't speak enough about uh the two of them and how and how pivotal they have been to the success of our team. Task meetings, so teachers addressing students' concerns is kind of that next level out of SST and looking at uh five oh four IEP evaluations. My understanding that Tiffany Palmerville gave you a pretty in-depth rundown on LRE and special education at the elementary session. So that's kind of our same component, same type of process we would do at the middle school level. And then the the lunch bunch as well at both sites. And then the last piece, the student, the, excuse me, the parent support, just talking about getting to know not only our kids, but inviting our parents in. One of the things we talk about the most is inherently, we have a shared interest in our students, right? We know that we have systems and tools in place to be able to help kids and parents want what's best for their kid, right? So when we really sit down, we talk about these proactive strategies and running them through the list of all the things that are happening within our PBIS programming, our student support team and the resources that we can utilize to help them has been a huge success at both sites to be able to build that trust in. And also note that we do have a lot of great systems to be able to help all of our students in both the non academic and academic realms.
So lunch bunch is an academic support?
Yeah, so we have during lunch. So our counselors who are. So our counselors do a really good job of identifying who those students are out of SST and then meeting with them and talking to families and saying, hey, during lunch, let's make a plan. Maybe it's once a week, maybe it's twice a week where students can spend a small portion of their time after they've planned, hey, we're going to work on this skill or this worksheet or something to kind of get them back on pace and have a counselor connection too. So it's really twofold in establishing that relationship with parents. But also having students have that level of success of, I can do this, right? I am organized. I got this thing checked off and building that up with teachers as well has been great. So, and that's a really huge tool because it's not pulling them from any classes, right? It's during that non-academic time. And a lot of students are actually reluctant to start that. But once they feel that success and that positive movement and see that grade maybe come up a little bit or missing assignments go down, or parents are happy that they're attending that, that lunch bunch time, we see a lot of good success with that program.
Yeah, because lunch is a.
Sacred time.
Sacred time.
Sacred time. Or you guys, you guys did something with lunch buddies, not lunch.
Yeah, alum at the elementary school, yeah, which was rolled out to middle school.
Or something else at middle school level, right? Love the lunch.
Yeah, we had like Titans and Trojans thrive. I think it was Titans thrive was the, but it was essentially the same thing. Have, having carrying adults come in to interact with kids more from a social standpoint. We have a dedicated staff member who does that academic support.
And hasn't, some of this sounds so familiar to what you see in the elementary schools. A lot of this gets started earlier.
Yeah. I think it's important that even though, you know, the setting gets bigger, the support's still there. You know, those through lines that you have at the elementary level. It might have to function differently because we have different systems in place. But the support, to your point, is there in, in very similar ways.
And, and you're also trying to grow capacity as students get older, right? We wouldn't want the same supports at middle school that we had at elementary. We're trying to actually help them grow in their learning, academic and non-academic. So, you know, taking a little less support away, they have a lot of freedom when they go from fifth to sixth grade. What does that look like in support and in building? So, I mean, I think those pieces, you will see some through lines from elementary to middle school to high school. But you'll also see how you're allowing that student to mature and grow up and learn how to function, hopefully by the time they leave, right? In a way that supports them in the workforce or higher end.
Do we have big brothers, big sisters in middle schools too?
We do have some students who do have.
Bigs that come in.
Bigs that do come in and then partnership, which is another really positive support for students.
Is that usually after school or would that be at lunchtime?
We have them come in and meet at lunchtime. Last year, I, I don't recall if we had a high number of those, but historically they have come in at lunchtime. They usually bring a buddy with them, so, you know, they still get that social, you know, that social component of lunch as well.
And some of that's like those conversations we have with parents too, right? What are some of those other things that maybe don't happen from seven forty to two thirty five, right? That, that can be additional supports to be able to talk to. So thank you for bringing that up. So out of both of these worlds, academic and non-academic, these concerns basically come to our student support team. So I wanted to paint a clear picture of who the people are in the room at student support team. So the who, and again, we've talked about this already, but the coach at both sites is really the facilitator who is running this work for each grade level, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. This happens weekly and is scheduled for a certain amount of time so that we can actually look at new referrals, monitor old referrals, and make plans for what we're going to do with that information. So it's a pretty robust team. So we have our coach, we have our grade level principal, counselor, social worker, and the teacher component, noting that time is very limited. We actually have a pretty streamlined process where if a concern comes in about a student, hey, the student is displaying this behavior, gets referred to our team, there's a Google document where all teachers can provide some feedback, right? What are you seeing in first hour? Is it a first hour thing? Is it a six hour thing? We really want to make sure that all those components and all of those trusted adults that we have our students interacting with have a voice and how we can best support our kids. So that team is pretty robust. The what of it is a team of all of our educators that review the concerns brought to them to hopefully develop a targeted support plan. So we want to know what's happening and what are the systems that we have in place or tools that we can use to help that individual student? Or what might a possible intervention be to help them? We do this every single week within our team and we meet from about thirty to forty-five minutes, depending upon the number of students who are coming in. If that time is not enough time to go through those SST referrals, we are committed to finding time to be able to review that. So every single referral that's brought to our attention by a teacher is reviewed and time is created to do that. And also that parent communication piece and letting them know that we do have a concern and we're coming from a place of care. And then we want to know that we want to utilize everything we can to be able to help your student. These in-person meetings, meetings really create an intervention plan. So what is the concern? If it's an attendance concern, what are we going to be able to do to talk about what that student might need? What support might the parent need? What are those specific interventions? And how is that information going to be shared on? So all of those plans that are developed are shared with all of the people that need them, right? So individual teachers, counselors, social workers with a timeline. And this is where our coaches really come into play. When they've reviewed the next week or at, at the most in two weeks, we, we talk about, has it improved, right? And if it hasn't improved, what does that data tell us? And what is the next step? And what can we possibly do to be able to address that, that problem to help that student? And the why is the most important, right? So we talk about this and that kind of led with this is that all of our kids that come to our school each day and then our parents share with us need all the supports that we have to be successful. That's really what it boils down to. All of our teachers that work with our kids, our counselors, our social workers, we have a shared interest in students. And the reason why we have this tier two process is that if students need supports, we need to figure out what those supports are, leverage them and make sure that they're in, in place to support those students. Any questions with the, just the process of the team?
Do I dare ask, how many referrals you have this last year?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So again, just going back to my, my personal experience of having, so starting in sixth grade and moving up into seventh grade last year and now into eighth grade, the number of referrals actually, which is a really good thing that we would predict, the number of referrals from sixth, seventh, and eighth decrease every year. And that tells us that as students are spending more time with us and more referrals are coming in, there's more adults who are bringing things to our attention that we can help with, the number of kids who are needing those additional supports is decreasing, which is phenomenal. I would say even last year, probably twenty-five to thirty-five sixth grade students and then tiered down a little bit less from seventh to eighth grade. One of the things I would like to note though too is that process of that fifth to sixth transition, I would have suspected that number to be much larger from fifth grade into sixth grade with some additional concerns. But a lot of those concerns are already addressed and aren't coming to the SST team because we know who those kids are, what supports have been successful, and maybe some additional things that we need to ramp up as their environment changes. And that information's uncommunicated with our teachers. So in reality, when you look at the numbers, it's, it's actually a lot less than I would have anticipated. And then the students, the hope is that as that referral comes in, as that list over the year gets smaller and smaller because we found those tier two or tier three strategies that are helping those kids, which, which does happen. Thank you. I just wanted to give you kind of a snapshot of when we meet as an SST team, what, what are we doing or what are we looking at? So this process is, is pretty complex in terms of initiation, planning, implementation, monitoring, and then exiting students from the student support team process. So as you go through this from left to right, it's really talking about who is the student that we're talking about? What grade are they in the demographic information? And then we want to be able to make sure that teachers that are, if you're having a concern about a student in second hour and fourth hour, that both of those teachers aren't working in isolation. Because if there's something that's working in second hour, that fourth hour teacher needs to know. So we go back to that collaboration work and ensuring some of those observations and feedback. The student support team does a pretty comprehensive review, right? We look at, do they have a five oh four or do they have an IEP? Because if they have a five oh four, those are managed by our counselors. So our counselor kind of takes the lead with that process. If they have an IEP, they have a case manager, right? Especially a teacher who's dedicated to them and what is their area? So we want to be able to identify the first, who made the referral and then collect feedback. So a form is sent out to our teachers just to collect feedback on those non-academic or academic concerns to make sure that we have a comprehensive full picture. Again, being in from sixth into seventh and eighth, we look at their CA, right? If this student is new to us, this happens for all of our students who are in T-Camps. But if there's different students who are coming to our area, we want to have a full picture on where they were academically and non-academically before they got to us. And then that additional form is sent to our teachers. So this is basically how we're keeping track of the what we're doing. One of the things, the parts that's most valuable is the parent column. And I will tell you this, that all of the SST referrals that happen regardless of sixth, seventh, or eighth grade, it is the grade level principal's responsibility to make sure that the parents are contacting. We talk about the things that we're doing with kids, right? It's that proactive support to make sure that they're identifying, hey, we noticed this area of concern. We are here to help you and here are the supports that we have, right? And we found that obviously, parents want what's best for their students too. And again, building those relationships over time has been invaluable to be able to help all of our students. And then the, the right-hand sides that pass processes, what I mentioned before. So the teachers addressing student, students' concerns. If we go through this SSD process, this process can vary from anywhere from a short period of time, from two weeks up to potentially about six weeks. And that's kind of the timeline that we want to stop at because if we've exhausted those tier two interventions, we want to know what's next in terms of tier three to be able to help those students. So this is just a snapshot of how we're collecting that data, monitoring that data, and then cycling back to it to make sure that we're implementing with fidelity.
And I, I think one of the things I found most intriguing when you go through this process was simply that fidelity check on tier one. So what do, what supports are supposed to be in place for each and every student, right? What is that base level of support? And, and that is a great way to actually get a pulse and do a check on where, where you're at with your tier one, tier two, and tier three. So if we aren't doing everything we need to do in tier one, then we need to go back and actually put those supports in place to make sure it's happening before we actually advance to a tier two. Otherwise, you end up with an upside-down pyramid and you have more people and more students in tier two than actually should be able to be serviced in tier one.
Good. Then I mentioned this before, this is just the student support team referrals. And we talked about how comprehensive it is. So everybody who the students interacting with from their teachers, social worker, counselor, grade level principal is putting their feedback within here to collect a, an observation, basically a full picture of what's happening, what supports are happening within there, within the tier one interventions attempted. What are tier two? And then the, the robust piece is that second, or excuse me, the last piece on there with our action plan. What are we doing? Who's doing it? When are we going to come back and revisit? And how are we going to communicate those, communicate those plans out to make sure that we are implementing with fidelity? Just wanted to provide you with the sample of what that looks like that our whole team will review. So in that is our student support team tier two.
Thank you.
Questions? Any questions?
It's a lot, isn't it? Saturation's light. Should have some caffeine in those.
That's all good. I have a big, big picture question, not just about the last piece, but y'all talked about the importance of coaches, instructional rounds, professional development, the professional learning communities. I didn't hear teacher collaborative routines tonight, but is that not appropriate for middle schools? Is that just?
No, it's absolutely appropriate. One of the things at the middle school level, our TCR groups, our teachers have a high degree of autonomy based on what they identify as, as their needs within the group of teachers that they're working. So it's harder for me to say with certainty, you know, exactly where that focus is. Although it will still be aligned with the work of the building, we still, you know, give our teachers autonomy with, with those conversations. So it's not something I think that is planned by the building, which is why we didn't include it in our conversation. But it's certainly an important component and time for our teachers to be able to, you know, decide what they need to work on personally and within their, their teaching groups.
One of the things that's still within, correct me if I'm wrong on this. At least in the past, our teacher evaluation model has used.
SLOs.
SLOs, thank you, student learning objectives. And that's a time a lot of teachers have worked on those, those SLOs. And under the new evaluation model, SLOs are still included.
Correct.
And so that is a time a lot of teachers work on those SLOs, which again, incorporate data and build that as they do that. And some use the problem of practice even as a part of their SLO when they do that. But that, that is often a part of that time that they have to as a requirement of their evaluation.
In, in reviewing the form, the local assessments. So like your departmental or content area assessments, that's time for them to work and their teams to do that.
They don't have to, but they have to do that. It doesn't begin in that time, some do some other things, but a lot of them utilize that time to do.
Yeah. So, so what comes next? We've got a lot of support systems in place. We're upgrading our curriculum. John, you've, you're aligning our school district. What's the next thing on your docket that you're thinking about and that's can improve our school district?
I still think, you know, we've made some strides in our scope and sequence of what is to be taught in classrooms. I really think that we need to go through the, the practice of what, there's a tool called the survey of an active curriculum. So there's one thing of having a curriculum and a map. It's another on what exactly is being taught in classrooms. And I do think that we need to use that survey of an active curriculum and go through that process to identify, you know, making sure that, you know, that nobody is veering from the curriculum or not even purposely, but not realizing a spending the amount of time that should be on certain standards and certain things in that element. And until we go almost, it, it, it's almost an audit of exactly what is actually being taught. Until we go through that, I don't know we truly know what that is. So if you have your scope and sequence and everybody has clearly understand, understood what's to be taught, we have instructional practice that's going through and looking at those high-yield strategies of, we're able to see those in the classroom being taught. But then when it goes to the content, we've got to really take a look closely at that content that is supposed to be taught and is there, if it's actually being done into the level that it's being done. In my opinion, we need to take some real time in staff. It's, it's a hard thing to do to really do that audit, to identify that, to make sure that we're spot on in that way. That's a personal opinion of something that is really on my mind as we go through next.
And that's a great process. So West Middle School, you were there, I think, when we did a sampling of that. And I, I don't know if, I don't know if shock is the right word, but teachers are doing the reflection and the answering of the surveys. And so individually, they can see where they have gaps in their teaching. And so similar to like a rounds where you get some reflection on what you're doing, that is very specific to content, which then relates to how much time they're spending on specific areas of instruction. You see that a lot in elementary, like teachers that either love science or hate science or love math or hate math or whatever it happens to be, but spending more time in areas that they're more interested in. And it gives them a little bit of reflection on the, that balance that needs to occur.
We've had teachers do a lot of work of scope and sequence and have that, I think, continuing to make that live and update that. I think it's an important thing to say while we buy a, a text and materials that is not the curriculum. So when we look at even then, what is it that we are still supplanting, supplementing, you know, in there from that standpoint? But everybody having a very clear understanding of really those three-legged stool of, you know, okay, what's being truly taught? You know, is it aligned with what we're supposed to be doing? You know, based on those standards, what our assessments are? Again, is it, is, is the, the teaching practice, the pedagogy actually happening, you know, in the classroom? I think, you know, that, that really goes through strong. And, and then the other thing that I will tell you is I think and there's a lot of work to be done and, and we don't have a great grasp on this even across the ISD, is I think we need to really try hard to develop a common assessment system. So from a seventh grade geography class to a seventh grade geography class, like an end of course assessment or some of those benchmark assessments in between, we're testing the kids on the exact same thing that we know is aligned. And that's a whole lot of work to build, but I think that's a next step as well to try and do.
In one time a year.
Right. Or, but you also could do it, you know, you could have smaller benchmarks like NWA has, but can you have a little bit smaller that are common, you know, versus this teacher that just creates this quiz? And another one that creates a quiz that are two totally different ways and two totally different things. I think, how are you comparing apples to apples in that way? And we'll tell you, I did have a parent call me that, you know, was rather upset and didn't think that the content of a final exam even matched what should be, you know, that was on the scope and sequence of taught in the class. That's a problem. And without having common ones and be able to, you know, be able to evaluate that from a teacher-to-teacher basis, we truly can't get that element. So there's two places I really would love to try and have in the future, continue to build that scope and sequence, but survey of an active curriculum and common assessment along with what we're doing now.
Seems like the instructional rounds will really start that reflective.
And it does, in, in the practice, you know, so there's the practice. In, in the practice, you know, so there's the practice and pedagogy that's there, and then there's the content, and then there's the, you know, expertise of content and the mastery and assessment of content that's on the other side.
It's nice that scope and sequence isn't a four-letter word.
No, and, and you know, and it's okay to have a somewhat of a variance. What's, what's important is that you have common assessments that show regardless of a teacher telling a little bit different this way or a little bit different that way or that, that in the end, the end result's the same. And I think, you know, that's where I think we have a lot of work to do, as many districts do. But, you know, that's what I would really, really like to get some capacity and hopefully with our staff and our central office team to begin working with folks and, and doing.
Are we thinking of that for this coming school year or more like two years? I was going to say, because just listening to y'all with what, all the new initiatives and systems that have been put in place the last few years.
It's, it's time, but that's the vision where as we go through our next strategic plan, I think those are some of the conversations we have to have to continue to build on.
Same for the common.
Yeah, but, but like I say, I mean, when, when we walked in, I think, you know, a lot of work's been done by this group of, of scope and sequence that wasn't there. You know, a lot of, of curriculum materials and things that were ancient, you know, and Etherdollars have helped us a long ways down that road. And we have some really good building blocks in place, but we also still have quite a road to, to still march down here to really get where we need to from an academic and instructional standpoint. And that's no criticism of people not working their tail off, it just takes time from where we were.
Big district takes a lot of time.
Yes, it does.
To steer the ship in a different direction. But what I will say is having the strategic plan to focus on, that helps us focus our work at central office, at the building level, and really builds that cohesive conversation about where our next steps are. And in that strategic plan, we talk about instruction, we talk about academic and non-academic needs as well as how we're using data to drive decisions. Those all come into play and like you can't have one without the other. So I, I think the idea of tonight was not only to talk about how we actually get to the point where we're having impact on academic outcomes, was to, to have, have a better understanding about all the pieces of the puzzle that come together. Because you can't have one spinning and not the others, or you slip right back to where you were.
There's a lot of teachers that I've had come and say, if we, if I can't come up with strategies on behavior, I can't do the academic stuff that I need to do.
Can't get to it.
Right? So they are, they are tie-bart, if you will. And so I think that this was a good demonstration of that tonight of where our middle schools, and, and I want to hand it, you know, to our middle school team. The alignment between, between these two buildings from when I came is drastically different, drastically different. You know, I, you, you just, you see a, you, you go to one building, the other, and we're a lot closer than we were before. I think we all feel there's still room to grow and things that we want to do and those things, but you know, we, we've come a long way in that aspect, you know, and, and really proud of that work.
Great, well, thank you all for your work.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Yep, any other questions? I guess actually one, on the referral side, because this is obviously coming out of COVID, but A, there's no real data norm yet, but just the referrals of intervention needed, is that, do you feel like it's widening up, is it?
Getting, or leveling out.
Depending on the time of year, right?
Yeah, time of year is really important for middle school.
It's a great way to.
Really. No, I, I think that we, we are getting back to that, you know, we talk a lot about the academic and non-academic, right? All of our students have a variety of their needs. I, I do think it is slowing down in terms of the number of referrals and really just having good people in front of our kids and having the systems in place. We're getting back, and I say normal, but getting back, getting back to normal, right? Because we're in a spot where it wasn't normal for a while. So I really feel as we get back into like being in our schools and, and coming into a school and, and walking around and doing those things, that, that there are less referrals because we've really had to take a look at our systems and what's in place and what kids really need.